We are live, your worship.
All right, council, I'd like to call this committee at the whole meeting for March 14th, 2024 to order with adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make that motion? Do I need to? Do I need to do this? And that the agenda be adopted by moving item 9D to following 9A only if the consultant is not available to present in the original order. Mr. Black has a consultant on his way and he's been stopped in, in, on his way because of a motor vehicle accident. So someone want to make that motion for me, please? Counselor Orlando, Counselor Cherry, all in favor? Motions carried. Thank you. And adoption of the minutes of the committee at a whole from February 15th. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Devlin, second by Counselor Orlando, all in favor? Motions carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Counselor Palmer?
Just a question on the wastewater treatment plant update. It's actually kind of business arising from Tuesday, but there was an appointment for a delegation to the province for lobbying. And I'm just, and the thing that we didn't discuss, and I'm sure that needs to be happened, it's just you on the council representatives for that.
Well, at this point in time, we're still trying to get that meeting to come to fruition before we decide who's going to go.
Good.
We originally thought it would be myself, Mr. Black, and Mr. Parliament.
Right.
And at this point, we want to find out if we're even going to be able to have that meeting. And then, once we go from there, we'll find out if they're willing to accept all of us coming or how they want to do it.
Okay.
So that's where we're at, council.
Thanks.
Any other business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we are going to go right into delegations. I can't see past the computer, so Kathy English is here to present on behalf of Revelstoke Museum and Archives, her annual report. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you, and good afternoon, your worship counselors and staff. I've got a bit of a cold, so it might sound a bit rough. And I just did Brown Bag History yesterday and I posted it online, but it's, my voice got increasingly hoarse as I was going through there. But thank you for giving me this opportunity to present our annual report, which you've all received copies of. And once again, we had a good year with record attendance and admission income and record gift shop sales. We added to our collection several significant pieces, including the trowel used to place the cornerstone of the old brick Queen Victoria Hospital in 1912, several items from pioneer Revelstoke businesses, and two additional paintings by internationally known artist Sophie Atkinson, lived in Revelstoke for several years. We received more archival records and photographs, including a remarkable collection of photographs from the family who state Teddy Glacier Mine at Camborne in the 1920s. We've continued to add material to our portal on the B.C. Regional Digitized History website, which allows free access to a considerable amount of our archival records. We currently have several thousand photographs, our oral history collection of interviews from the 1970s, the high school annuals, and CPR accident reports. Our map collection is currently being added, which will see more than 200 maps available for viewing online. We had 36 school and youth groups last year taking part in programs that follow the B.C. curriculum and provide a local focus to the subjects. We continued our popular downtown cemetery tours with 140 participants. And I'm pleased to say that I've got a volunteer now, Bill McFarlane, who's leading tours. He loves doing them, the people love him, and I love him, me not having to do everyone. So it's a win-win. Brown Bag History celebrated its 20th anniversary, which has presented 375 talks in that time. Most of them researched and presented by me. This past year, we had an additional 13 talks with 234 attendees and more than 4,500 views of the talks on our YouTube channel. We added a new program called Film Fridays that shows films with relevance to Revelstoke and District. It's starting to build an audience and will continue into the future. The gift shop continues to be a vibrant part of the museum and features consignment with several local artists, as well as a good variety of other products. Income from the shop helps us with our staffing needs. The Heritage Garden will be 20 years old this year, and thanks to the efforts of many volunteers, it continues to be a beautiful and restful green space in downtown Revelstoke. This year, thanks to a grant from the Columbia-Kootenay Cultural Alliance, we were able to commission metalwork artist Kyle Thornley to build a beautiful and functional donation box, which was added to the garden. We had 35 volunteers who contributed about 650 hours of work at the museum, including gardening, helping with presentations and school tours, doing research, carpentry jobs, website updates, events, fundraising, and many other jobs. Our volunteers make the museum a vibrant and inclusive space. We've increased our presence on social media with daily posts on Facebook and Instagram. This has proved very popular, with some wrote posts having a reach of more than 1,000 people. A popular feature has been on this day featuring a photo from the collection that was taken on that day. It has increased awareness and interest in the museum and our collections, and we often have comments from people that add to our knowledge about the photos. We continue to be active in the community with presentations at Mount Carshia Court and Overly Manor, talks at community gatherings, and articles in the media, including the weekly glimpses of the past column. A fun event this year was hosting B.C., Royal B.C. Museum's marvelous mushroom exhibit. It brought in a lot of locals who hadn't come to the museum for some time, as well as a lot of tourists who were attracted by the special exhibit and also were able to experience all of our regular exhibits as well. We worked with the Department of Parks, Recreation and Culture and Design of Rob Buchanan to replace the old river trail panels along the paved walkways and to add several more panels, including at Queen Elizabeth Park, Farwell Park, Farwell Townsite, the golf club, and the courthouse. These panels are a great way for both locals and tourists to discover aspects of our history throughout the city. We're finishing up a few long-term projects this year, and it will be good to see them completed. We've created a digital version of our Stories Beneath the Surface exhibit, and this will be live on Digital Museums Canada, probably within a few weeks. The exhibits will be available in both English and French and will bring this local and regional subject to a wide audience. We're also working on a book on the same subject to be published sometime this year. A new exhibit, Reclaimed Voices, will open in the program room this summer. It will feature little told stories, including stories of women and children, a Japanese community, and others. Will also feature several contemporary stories shared through video interviews. We are currently working on a memorandum of understanding with the Colville Confederated Tribes and the Seniots Confederacy to create a formal document for working together. This will cover ownership and stewardship of Seniots artifacts, as well as protocols for creating and sharing content about the Seniots. Of course, our big project for 2024 is the installation of a vertical platform lift to improve accessibility at the museum and to allow people to access all public areas of the museum. We've been very pleased with the support and encouragement of the city of Revelstoke, particularly Lori Donato, manager of Parks, Recreation and Culture, and Troy Biggs, facilities manager. They have ensured that the project is able to move forward. Our fundraising efforts have been very successful. We've raised more than $700,000, with more than 90,000 of that coming directly from local businesses, individuals, and organizations. We're very gratified to receive $400,000 from the Columbia-Shushaw Regional District, which really kick-started the fundraising efforts and made it possible for us to reach our goal. The tendering process is currently underway, and we hopeful that, we're hopeful that construction will begin this spring or summer. The project will also see the construction of a universal accessible washroom on the second floor. We're also addressing other accessibility issues, thanks to a grant from the Government of Canada distributed by United Way. This grant is allowing us to produce audio versions of all of our exhibit content for people with vision loss, as well as print and video versions for people with different accessibility needs. This will allow everyone to access the content in a way which best suits their needs, creating inclusion and reduction of barriers. We're also creating kits to assist children and adults with sensory needs and neurodiversity. We want to make sure that we are fulfilling our mandate of making the place where all are welcome to learn, participate, and share in our history. I'm very thankful for our amazing staff and board of directors. They are a big part of why the museum is successful and have such a positive reputation in our community. This July of 2024 marks the 50th anniversary of the museum in our current Heritage Post Office building. The city of Revelstoke purchased the building from the federal government specifically to house the museum, and we've appreciated being in this beautiful heritage building, and we appreciate the city's ongoing care of the building and the city's continued support of the museum and its programs. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today.
Thank you, Kathy. Counselors, any comments or questions for Kathy? Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to, to the chair, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you're doing. This is fantastic. You, you guys, I don't even know what to say. I'm speechless almost. Big fan of that curling sweater. I think it's amazing as well, going through that. But yeah, thanks for everything you guys have done, you, the board, and everybody else involved.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's good to see all that you're doing. I was, I had to chuckle to myself when I saw the key from the King Eddie and I'm going, okay, who had that in their pocket? Thanks for what you do. It's good to see that we're at the money that we need for that vertical lift. Is that correct?
We believe so. We'll know for sure once the tenders are completed and we know final costs.
All right, that's something that we had in conversation. Thank you. Any other comments for Kathy? Thank you again, Kathy. Thanks for being here and thanks for what you do.
Thank you very much.
You make our job easier.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to 9A staff reports. Notice of motion policy, Ms. Floyd, do you have a presentation or comments?
I do not have a presentation, Your Worship, but this was stemmed from a previous council meeting where we, it was determined that we didn't have any, um, specific procedures on how to bring a notice of motion forward. The council procedure bylaw is in our work plan to do a complete rewrite this year, so we prepared this policy that will hopefully do in the interim and provide council of guidance on the procedures to bring a notice of motion forward for council consideration.
Any comments from council that require an ask for motion? Counselor Lisa?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I think it will be nice to have a policy. Just a question, when it comes to bringing a motion forward to the draft, there is no timeline for that? Was that intentional, or can this be brought forward just before?
Um, I believe that there was a one week.
Yeah. Oh, then I may have just missed that. I believe it was mentioned.
Yes, number one, number one says at least one week prior to the council meeting.
Okay.
Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, so thank, thank you very much for being proactive on this. I think it's going to be very helpful for us. The, on, on that timeline, I'm just wondering if it should be in line with our council procedure by law as far as stuff on the agenda, which is 12 noon Monday prior. It's just one day difference, but it's consistent with that, so that was one comment. And then, the question, so on providing the notices to the corporate officer, which I think is appropriate, and it's fine for, and I think it's a good idea of being copied to the mayor and chief administrative officer. I'm just wondering if that's necessary. I'm, I'm really nitpicking there, so don't even comment on it. The, I think that was the main thing. Also, I guess just I noticed a couple of things. And maybe I'll, I'll provide those comments to you just directly, just because I haven't really reviewed it in super detail before, so, yeah.
Sure.
That's good.
Counselor Holm?
Uh, yeah, thank you for preparing the policy. You know, yeah, I'm supportive of the policy in general. I think the details that I would look at are somewhere related to what Counselor Palmer was talking about in that process to, to get it on the agenda and also to have best practices in drafting those notices of motion. The downside, the potential downside is that it can become a disruptive thing where there's all kinds of, you know, people are throwing a million things on there. The upside of it is, is people can, individual counselors can have ideas and initiatives and bring forward things. But in my mind, and I did notice the policy comparison from various places, I think it's trying to instill best practices in drafting those resolutions. So having, realizing that the incumbency is upon the person drafting it to do the work and also support it. So it mentions a 10-minute presentation once it gets there. So that means I'm doing, I'm doing heavy lifting, I'm making the proposal, I'm, you know, not only making the proposal, but having a path through to be a policy change or, and, you know, a specific initiative or whatever it might be. So my question is this, is how with that notification process or with that initial interface, before it gets on first agenda, how will, will staff interface to make sure that, for example, it's not disqualifying because it's not within the intent or is not clear or is actually done well, is supported with the ability, for example, to, you know, know when to provide your digital files for your presentation if you're going to present it. And I guess one sort of related detail question is, with the requirement that it be aligned with the strategic priorities, is there going to be, how is that going to be determined? Because I think that's a bit of a judgment call. And I guess of the last, now that I think of it, final question is, is there going to be, you know, in my mind, people should be able to have the ability, this is the point of this, to get something on the agenda that I think needs to be on the agenda. There's not going to be something preventing them from doing that. So, so staff's not going to say, oh, this is not within the criteria, we reject it. So it was kind of a mixed message there, like, you know, it has to be up to standard, but also needs to have the freedom to use this. So, that's right.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't really have a comment. I think that this, the intent of this isn't to stifle council, it's to provide guidance on how to move forward. In the procedure, it does, does outline that a council member wanting to bring a notice forward would consult with myself and we would work together to ensure that it didn't do any of the negative things or have any impacts that, that you were concerned about.
Yeah.
Counselor Palmer, Counselor Cherry?
I was just going to move the motion, but I'll have you that discussion.
Counselor Cherry, do you have a comment?
If you don't mind. Thanks, Your Worship. I'm curious if anybody would, is, sorry. I lost the spot. Uh, there's one line I'm thinking may need to be stricken in this. Sorry, apologies, Your Worship. How the motion aligns with council's strategic priorities. Although we do have strategic priorities, I do believe that sometimes things do arise that may be outside of this, that I don't want to have that on there. That may negate the ability to bring a notice of motion forward.
So, I don't disagree, but also we could make it really broad-based. And just as other counselors have said, we don't want to be able to say, no, that doesn't meet those priorities. The idea is bringing things to council so we can discuss it. So I'm going to ask Ms. Floyd to comment about that because we're looking at something that maybe other councils have done or LGLA has suggested. With that, can that be taken off and still give us some parameters with which to work?
Or can we add another broad-based line to that? Whether or not it, whether or not it agrees with our strategic priorities or why it's being roughly?
Uh, thank you, Worship, to Counselor Cherry. I think the, the strategic priorities that were set last year by this council were considerably different than previous councils, where there were like five kind of more goals and then inside of each of those goals. So I'm happy to remove that. I think the intent of that was just to not have something out in left field that one counselor may feel important, but the rest of council does not.
Yeah, and I wish I had a good example right now of something that would be mentionable here, but may not be on the strategic priority list.
Well, I think even what Counselor Orlando had alluded to was making sure that it doesn't basically say, no, it doesn't basically impinge on counselors bringing articles that are important to the community, even though it's not mentioned in our strategic priorities. Counselor Palmer, then Counselor Lucy.
Yeah, so I'm prepared to put a motion that staff bring a, the notice of motion policy C4 to the next council meeting with potential minor amendments based on the discussion today.
Just second to that motion. Counselor Cherry, any discussion on the motion? Counselor Lucy, do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, thank you, Mirasels. Through to what Counselor Cherry was saying, if we added how this motion does or doesn't align with council's strategic priorities, then it kind of leaves that open to be able to bring it forward and then you can justify your motion coming forward if it isn't aligned with council's strategic priorities at the current time.
Okay, it's a good point, and that aligns with what Counselor Palmer and Counselor Cherry were saying in their motion. So, any other comments on the motion on the table? Counselor Cherry?
Your Worship, that's just a question to the chair and the corporate officer. Have you taken a look at, was it Ferney's? Uh, notice of motion policy? There was a brief mention, was it Ferney?
Yeah, it was Ferney, but on another matter, but I haven't seen it.
Just wonder if you were able to, had to take a look at that one?
I did not see Ferney's, no. I don't believe Ferney had one on their website. It might have been embedded right in their council procedure bylaw.
Yeah, just a little direction.
You just want everybody to have to read that.
It's easy to get, it's easy to get.
Yeah, just would love to take a look at another reserve municipalities friendly notice of motion policy. See how they adopted it as well.
Thank you, Counselor Cherry. I believe that not all municipalities have policies.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion on the table? Counselor Orlando?
Just a question, uh, the, it, it is limited to 500 words for the notice of motion. That does not limit the ability to provide more reports once it is being presented, links, PowerPoints, all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, Worship. Uh, just for clarification, Counselor Orlando, are you expecting all or many of those motions to come with big presentations?
Um, no, it, it really does depend. I guess, you know, my main thought, you know, I'm, I'm fine more or less with the policy as the way it is. I don't think there's anything in here that's going to prevent someone from presenting, even if it doesn't meet strategic priorities. I think they can get it on there. There's no pre-tr tribunal that limits you from getting there, so it's the ability to get there. So, so everyone can get there, then my focus shifts to best practices. So how, how do we use this so it's a great tool for council to appropriately bring forward things that they feel that are not being brought forward in other ways? So it doesn't restrict people in, in presenting a notice or doing a presentation. But the thing is, I think, you know, for, for an education process, it can be a short thing where I just want something to happen. But I think if it's a larger initiative, so if it's part of your own desire to get more of a strategic priority added to our list, you know, a new strategic direction, it's up to me to present that in the same way that a staff member would be presenting their report. It depends on, it's case by case, it can be totally different, but that is part of it, you know, including wording it well, doing your research, getting support, not just to get it passed at the council table, but to realize that that will then move forward on to further policy discussions going forward for the city.
Perfect. I just want to make sure that I don't match down in the future.
No, no, no.
A 200-word.
No, but one thing specifically, and it's, and when I'm really looking at education, is, 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 is not about, one thing I think it is not, is it's not me asking staff to do something for me. It's me doing the work, you know? It might be me doing the work that will lead to staff doing work further on, but they're not involved directly in getting this on the table, doing the presentation, and getting a positive vote to make that happen. That's up to me up until that point. It might be that we want, you know, staff to, you know, open on, you know, uh, you know, open City Hall on Saturdays or whatever the initiative is. It's not for me to say, hey, I think we should open City Hall on Saturdays. Will you put together a report to support that? I need to do that, you know, I need to do my research to do that.
And that's, that's a good point, because for one, the counselor is going to bring this notice of motion forward to do the, to do the work at any time. And, you know, in some of the notice of motions that you've just brought forward, you have done that work. And so that's the sort of thing. But I also, I mean, I want to encourage you to be able to do your presentation the way you feel best, and it doesn't need to be a report that we have to sit here for two weeks.
Perfect. No, I appreciate that, you know. Would this be a good time to bring up the ability to find things through the city website, such as policy documents? Or just let that one slide?
Let that one slide for now, because we're working on that website.
Appreciate it. Friendly reminder.
If you need something specific, just let us know.
Of course.
It's not the easiest on the website to read.
All right, any other discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? No motions carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, do we have our guest here? All right, so we are going to go then to our normal course of amenity cost charges. So I will ask Mr. Black to come forward and...
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce the virtually virtual, Mr. Joel Stur, who is our lead consultant on the development, on the development cost charge project. And a few weeks ago, that we come forward with a summary of the amenity cost charge bylaw that the province just brought forward for discussion and understanding what tools that might provide us as an agency in finding further funding resources for other municipal projects. So the first presentation is the ACC, the second will be the DCC, and lastly, a summary of where we are and where we're going.
All right.
Thank you.
There you go.
That's magic.
That's great. Okay, yeah, thanks, everybody. So I've got a presentation on amenity cost charges. I'll, I'll provide a little bit of background on amenity cost charges, talk about the purpose of the legislation, and some more detail on what amenity cost charges can be used for, what they can be funded, and then an overview of the process the city needs to follow to adopt ACCs. So this provides a little more detail. We've also got a discussion paper that is included in your package that provides a fair bit more detail in terms of the information. So the presentation is going to cover some of the high points, and it also elaborates on, there was a council report on January 9th by Paul Simon, who introduced the topic, so this provides a bit more detail. So in terms of background, the legislation was introduced or adopted and finally passed into law on December 7th, so it gives us this new tool. It's part of that whole package of legislation. It allows governments to collect amenity cost charges. And amenity, we'll get into a little bit more of the definitions, but it's basically something that provides social, cultural, heritage, recreation, or environmental benefits to communities. And, and they provide opportunities to collect funds for things like community centers, rec center, daycare, libraries, such from, from sort of increases in population or from in development. And now, there used to be, well, there still is, the power under, it's kind of like a, a non-specific power to collect community amenity charges. So the province had a guide that, that talked about it. It's always been a little fuzzy in terms of where that power comes from. So this legislation really clarifies the power that the municipality has in order to collect amenity charges. So it improves on that previous community amenity. So, it improves on that previous community amenity charge information that was out there. And it provides some really clear and specific steps for local government to follow. So, as I mentioned, they can, like, a direct quote from the legislation is, it's this facility that provides social, cultural, heritage, recreational or environmental benefits to the community without limitation. And so, it's important to know that it's got the words without limitation. So, it's not just these things. These are kind of examples and we've had that clarified through discussions and webinars with the province. So, they're providing examples to say, these are the types of things that we clearly have in mind, but you can also go a little broader. So, a community youth or senior center, a recreation or recreational or athletic facility, a library, a daycare facility and public square. There's also some wording that says, if the province wants to, they can also define things that aren't called amenities. So, they can do that in the future, but they haven't done that yet. And so, what can they fund? So, there was a few things that kind of sprung to my mind based on taking a look at your Parks and Recreation Master Plan and work that we're doing on the development cost charges that don't fit under the development cost charge regime right now. And that would be things like the arena, sort of a multi-sport complex with all the different facilities that Eric discussed. I'm not too sure where you're at in terms of considering those items. The rec center or the Parks Recreation Master Plan also discussed and improves the pool, sauna, locker, staff operations, climbing feature, those all seem to fit squarely within the ACC definition. Community center, there was discussion of more storage and usable spaces. It also creates to the Rebel Stone Museum Archives, Visual Arts Center, Rebel Stone Golf Course and Clubhouse, the Forestry Museum in Columbia View Park. So, those were just some things that kind of like jumped immediately to mind like, oh, wow, those are, those are all things that that fit squarely within the definition. Now, bear in mind, there are also, the province is going to be coming out with a guide, but they haven't come out with a guide yet that more clearly elaborates on best practices for amenity cost charges. But from my review of the legislation and from attending the webinars, those things seem to fit squarely within the power. And then, we've also got this longish list of things that we have over the years discussed with the ministry as to whether or not they can be included as parks development cost charges. And the answer to all these items is no, can't be included as parks development cost charges. But now, they seem to fit squarely within what you would think of as an amenity cost charge because it's our recreation facilities. You know, things like pickleball and tennis courts, basketball courts, baseball diamonds, the whole list there. So, basically, almost anything of a recreational nature, you would think that you would be able to include it as amenity cost charge. Now, an important thing is, it can only fund capital projects, so not operations and maintenance. You can't fund, say, like an operating deficit for some facility. It has a capital project. And it also has to be owned by the city, so that's important. Or owned and operated by a person or public authority that's entered into a partnering agreement with the city with respect to the amenity. So, there may be some partnering agreement between the city and maybe a sports organization or something like that to provide a certain facility as long as it's operated by that.
Counselor Cherry?
If you don't mind, could I just ask you a quick question on that?
You bet, yeah.
Through the chair. Does it have to be fully owned by the city? If we were engaged in a public-private ownership model for, say, a arena or multiplex in the future, would we still be able to use ACCs?
Well, it talks about a partnering agreement and and like a person or a public authority and by person, that's a pretty broad, it's like an entity or some entity that you have a partnering agreement with. So, that'll probably be something that'll be more, there'll be more detail in the guide that comes out because those are the types of questions that'll come up, you know, whether it is a public-private partnership. But it seems to me that the important thing is that there's some kind of a partnering agreement between the city and whatever entity it is. So, you're not just sort of providing money to complete, you know, arms-length, not associated organization. It's something that there's an agreement with the city. So, I guess it would probably depend on on the agreement that's set out for that type of facility.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer. Looking forward to seeing a little more information from that.
Yeah, and there's a lot of questions that people go, just like that, it's like, oh, what about this situation? What about that situation? And so, they did tell us that the guide was going to be coming out in in kind of late February, early March, but we haven't seen anything yet. Send them notes occasionally, say, hey, it was okay, at least an intro guide. Then they're going to have a more detailed guide that comes out in the summer. Another question that's come up is the older-style community amenity charges were used for, oftentimes for housing projects. So, for affordable housing or special needs housing. And we've asked the ministry whether the ACCs can be used for those and they definitely cannot be used. We asked them like five different ways. They said no. And they kind of hinted at there being some tools that may be coming up in the future that could be used for housing. In terms of the process, you have to identify that. So, you actually have to specifically identify the capital projects. You have to have a list. You got to say, this is the capital project, here's the amenities and here's the cost. And then you identify it will apply to a specific area of the city or the entire city. And then you have to determine the portion of the projects that would be paid for by the new population and by the existing population. So, this is a very similar process that we use for development cost charges. And then you need to subtract any amounts that are funded by grants, so you subtract all the grant amounts. And you figure out how the charges should vary based on different areas, zones, sizes of lots or units. And then you calculate the charge very similar to development cost charges based on per unit in a development or per square meter or per lot. It does also set out in legislation specific requirements to consult with the public and those affected by the bylaw. So, once again, that's consistent with development cost charge best practices as well. And then you prepare a background report, then you move through the regular council bylaw adoption process. Interestingly, amenity cost charges do not require approval by the inspector of municipalities, which is great because, you know, you're in control of it. They do want to see, you know, if they ask for a report or any information respecting the amenities cost charge. So, you need to have something ready for it. But you don't have to go through that approval process, which often takes like two or three months. And sometimes there's little roadblocks to doing some of the things that you might want to do. So, I think that's definitely an improvement. And then, once they're adopted, very similar to development cost charges, they need to pay, developers need to pay at approval of subdivision or issuance of the building permit. You can waive the charges for not-for-profit rental housing, including supportive housing or for-profit affordable housing. So, that's once again very similar to the development cost charges. And similarly, the DCCs, you have to put them in a special amenity cost charge reserve fund. The money goes in there and you only pull the money out to pay for those capital projects that are specifically on the list. One thing that they've talked about is that it does have to be a pretty specific list. Sometimes with development cost charges, like especially parks, we kind of generalize it a bit and say, well, you know, we need to make improvements to, say, a neighborhood park or a community park and we're going to make improvements worth, you know, X amount of dollars, but we don't have like a super specific list. I think for this legislation, they want a list of exactly what are these amenities and how much are they going to cost? So, yes, that provides a general overview of amenity cost charge legislation and some of the steps that can be taken.
Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Counselor Palmer?
Great to see you again. Thank you for the presentation. It's clear. So, interesting, it seems that the ACC process, even though it's mirroring the DCC, it's actually easier because we don't have to go through the ministry to get it signed off.
True, yes. Don't have to get signed off by the ministry.
And yet, if I'm understanding, when it's very specific, so they're still asking, or it still requires the same kind of detail, it seems, so to be, and to, so in that scenario, so, yeah, we're considering a multiplex building and we have a estimate based on some information of around $75 million or something like that.
Right.
So, but not a sort of detailed. So, I guess the two questions on that is, well, actually, maybe three questions. One, if we have two projects, say, there's another project that we actually have a estimated, a good estimate on it. Yeah, so whereas the multiplex is a good idea, it's probably going to cost more. So, could we create that bylaw like now? And based on a more ambiguous number or not? And you may not know the answer to that because that was one of, and I guess, I believe that generally the DCCs, that was one of the roles of ministry is making sure you have really good numbers.
Right, that is one of the roles of the ministry, although they do, I think it probably depends, like, thinking about the multiplex. I would imagine that you would want to have a number that is, like, it's, you can substantiate it. It's in enough detail that you could say, yes, we've thought about this and here's what the cost is. Yeah, I doubt that it would be completely sufficient to say, you know, just, you know, one line, multiply like $75 million. You'd need some kind of a cost estimate that kind of backs it up. That says, oh, you know, here's, at least to sort of a level of detail where, and I'm just sort of like thinking aloud here, you've got a list of maybe like 10 items on a list that kind of make up a cost. I mean, the very best would be, you know, a finely detailed cost estimate that is set up by, like I say, a quantity surveyor or something like that. But I guess it depends on where you're at. But I also think that, you know, if, like, one of the goals of the ministry is to ensure that you start collecting money for these facilities, like facilities that are coming into, you know, very far in the future. And so, there can't be an expectation that you have a perfectly identified cost estimate. You want to start collecting this money maybe 10 years before you're actually going to build a project maybe. So, you don't have it completely, you know, perfectly identified. So, I would think there's going to be some, some flexibility there. And, and I'm just kind of speculating, but I'm imagining that the ministry will only really want to look at it when you're getting some challenges from from some people who are saying like, oh, you know, this cost estimate that they've got, it's going to completely, you know, latched based on that. So, then the ministry go, well, let's take a look at the report and see.
Let me go through the mayor and to council, I guess, information, just, you know, we're in the process of that feasibility, going up to a feasibility study. And will that feasibility study have enough information that we could actually create a bylaw for collection if that's the direction council went? The, my second question is on collection time. So, the, so for the one of the problems that we have with our DCCs not being updated is we don't collect and, you know, there's times people get their applications in the door and unfortunately, we lose out and that's happened lots with our DCC. It continues. So, I'm wondering, do we have a sense with the ACCs of can it be, you know, it probably can't be retroactive, but what are the triggers, you know, building, building the permit stage? Or is it development right stage?
Yeah, yeah, it's either building permit or subdivision. And, and I think you can, you'll be able to set that out in your bylaw like you can for a DCC bylaw. But I've also read that it will also be subject to the same it'll be subject to the same requirements, the same sort of in-stream protection requirements. So, if somebody has an application in, then they will have that same kind of year-long period that they have to get the safe building permit issued or the subdivision approved before they can realize that in-stream protection.
Right.
So, so, yeah, there will be things that you will miss out on certain ACC things because they'll get their building permit in, their application in before the bylaw is adopted.
And then my, my last question is on the portion, you touched on it very briefly, but attributable to the development. So, for example, the multiplex building and say, if it's $75 million or $100 million, the determination of the portion to new development compared to the existing tax base for this new facility, can you make any comment on that or?
Well, while the guide isn't out yet, I am quite sure they'll follow some of the same principles that development cost charges follow. In that, and it does allude to in the legislation that you have to determine what portion should be allocated to your own and what portion should be allocated to existing development. And there's, like with development cost charges, there's a range of tools that you can use to do that. And now, with a recreation facility, it's a little different than, say, sewage lift station where you can determine, you know, how much sewage is flowing in from the new development compared to existing. But you, I imagine one tool that you'll use is population and say, okay, well, how much new population is this facility going to serve? And you likely do that similar to development cost charges where you look at a 20-year projection and you might say, okay, over the next 20 years, at the end of the 20-year period, 25% of our population is going to be new growth. So, let's allocate 25% of the cost of this facility to new growth. That could be one way of doing it. There are probably likely some other tools. Like another approach that we use sometimes with DCCs is to say, okay, if we were to build a facility to serve the existing population, it'd be this big. Now, we have to build a facility to serve the existing population and growth, so it's going to be this big. What's the difference between the growth population construction and the existing population construction? So, there's another method that you can use. You might also say, well, this is probably a parallel type of analysis, but you could say, well, our population is reasonably well-served with one rink, but this facility needs two rinks. What's the cost of the second rink? Something like that. You know, I imagine there's going to be quite a few approaches that you could, you could consider. I think the important thing is that the approaches in the end are defensive and you can say, yes, this is how we allocated it and this is the reasoning behind it.
That's, and my mind starts to go into permutations, but
Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, Worship. I'm going to have a number of questions, both ACCs and DCCs. They'll be very similar. And I'm looking at this with a couple of different lenses. So, just the first one through the chair. How can we calculate cost towards new development? And a bit more specifically, will this be a charge per door, per square foot of new development, per construction value or finished product value? My fear is, and the reason I'm asking this, is we've seen DCC values per door method, whether someone builds an $8 million house with 16 bathrooms in the event of DCCs versus, you know, a two-bedroom townhouse, being charged the same on DCCs. So, I'm curious how this relates with ACCs.
Yeah, so the ACC legislation does talk about, like, all those edits, by lot, per unit or per square foot. So, there are those tools that are available. So, I think it could be up to the situation to determine exactly which approach that makes the most sense in each situation. I'm just going to quickly look at my
Well, I take a look. Do you know if we as municipality have the ability to charge differently across the board? Or does our, would our bylaw have to choose one of these scenarios for all ACC costs?
I think you could choose based on uses. So, and there is also, the legislation is fairly flexible in that you could have different ACCs for different areas as well. Similar to DCCs. But I would think that based on the legislation, you could have, say, a per square meter or area charge for some uses and a per unit charge for other uses, for example, or per lot check. Well, per lot is pretty straightforward, that's, you know, based on
That's, that's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
And then just one more question on the per lot size. Sorry, on the per lot thing, is that per lot size or just per lot in general? You know, a two-acre lot versus a 400-square-meter lot?
I think you could do it based on different sizes because it talks about different area zones, uses, sizes or number of lots or units in a development, so sizes. area zones, uses, sizes, or number of lots or units in it. So sizes is the word that's in there. So you could have it very based on lot, lot size if, if you wanted to. And I know that, for example, with development cost charges, I think we talked about this last time too. It's, you know, there are some communities that have like sort of different ranges of lot sizes. So, or, or also same thing with floor area that you can have some communities do it based on sort of ranges of floor area. You know, between 500 square feet and 1500 square feet, you pay this amount. Or there are some, especially for commercial industrial, which is very common, where you actually charge on a per square meter basis or per floor. So it's exactly, you got 150 square meters, you pay 150 multiplied by the dollars per square meters. So those are all options.
Okay, that's very interesting and a lot to think of going forward. Just the council. Although, you know, I just said, you know, although this is very interesting and it gives us potential funding opportunities for a multitude of projects, we also do have to keep in mind a lens of not slowing down future housing developments by trying to garner cash or monies for different projects. Just something to keep in mind.
You're just scared that I'm going to put in an extra charge on what you want?
No, I mean, I'm okay with that. It's, it's more or less, I don't want to see subdivisions not going forward because of the added costs. Then we lose out on market rate housing.
Good point. Yeah, good. Counselor.
Thank you, Mirzals. One question when it comes to collecting ACCs. So if we have a project multiplex, we may as well use that one because that was fairly relevant. Can we keep collecting ACCs for that project once we started construction? Can we collect them right to the end of construction? And if we have a phased approach to the construction, can we continue to collect ACCs while we build out all of the phases of the multiplex?
I'd say the answer is going to be yes to all of those questions. Once again, it will be important to look at the guide, but parallel to development cost charges, you can keep collecting for development cost charge project after it's built. You just have to have it, have considered it as part of your DCC calculations before it's built. So, and you can see how that would work. You're saying we need to collect money from growth units in order to pay for this. Well, the growth units are going to continue on after it's been built. So, and usually a good guide to how long you can keep on collecting is if there's a adventure or debt on a project. Once the debt's paid off, then it gets a little harder to justify. But, you know, it's usually like a 20-year period.
Okay. One follow-up. Then if we're going through this phased approach, would we have to change the value of the construction for that project to change the ACCs after we've built out of phases?
Yeah, that would, that would be a good idea to do. A lot of communities maybe don't update their, talking about development cost charges. I can see the same thing happening with amenity cost charges. They don't update the costs, say, after they've been built or as the process is going along. And then you end up with not collecting enough money. So it's, yeah. An excellent idea to say, okay, now we've done the first phase, we know what that costs, let's update that. The cost, oh, we have new causes, costs for phase two and three, let's update those costs. So, thank you. Good point. Counselor.
I worship. Thank you for the presentation. And I just had a question. I don't know if it's for staff or for the presenter, but my, my question is related to the options for charging a subdivision or charging a building permit. For example, the provincial government's made a lot of changes recently for density, like allowing three, four suites on, on single-family lots, et cetera. I am just sort of seeking a bit of background on those two options as presented. My horse sense is to go with building permits because that's the later phase. My concern would be that subdivision could create, doing a subdivision could create a non-level playing field for things that have already been subdivided. So I'm seeking some foot, some background on how to proceed forward with that. Any counter thoughts on that, whether that's a wise idea? And also even like, I don't even know if subdivision is technically part of going from single family and adding three bedrooms or leveling something and go going full thing. I don't think so. No, I'm getting a no over there. So yeah, I'm seeking thoughts on those options moving forward, pros and cons, basically.
Okay. So you're looking for options moving forward? I, I think that you really need to think a little bit about, just like with development cost charges, whether you collect it building permit or, or subdivision stage and some of the implications of that. For example, some implications of collecting that building permit, especially for single attached homes, is that you see this happening with all the cost charges. Some communities have said, yeah, instead of bringing the subdivision, we're going to do the building permit for single family. But then you have somebody who's bought a lot, you know, family wants to build a home, they come in and they say, oh, now you have to pay fifteen thousand dollars for your cost charges. So you know, a lot more sort of individual families or people who want to build being impacted versus say a developer who has 20 lots. And they pay for that all at one time. But that's a balance, right? Some, some community have said, no, that's fine. We're going to, you delay collecting your funds. But then you get maybe enhance the financial viability of that proceeding happening. So those are, those are balancing questions to be making.
Yeah. And my thought is sort of conversely to that is, you know, in that scenario, it sounds like a hardship for somebody building a single-family house. But if we're shifting all of these costs to multifamily developments, which is, you know, what we need desperately in this community for, for younger families, then that's another consideration is that could offset where, where the the pool of funds come from. And, and also we could not be capturing things that are not subject to subdivision. So I'm wondering about, I guess my question is about administration of that. Is there inherently one that seems to be easier than the other from, from a staff perspective?
Through your worship, Counselor Orlando. So the way we administer the bylaw currently is commercial, industrial, multifamily residential development is collected at building permit stage. And that's because industrial is based off of the area of land that's developed. So we don't know that until building permit stage when they subdivide. We don't know how much they're going to build in the future. Commercial is based on per square meter. You pay an X rate for DCCs. So again, at subdivision stage, we don't know what they're going to be building. So we can't charge DCCs. And then for multi-universal residential, it's based off of density. The higher density bill, the less cost per unit it is. And we don't know that until building permit stage. But when it comes to single-family residential, someone chops out a lot into 20, they always pay it at subdivision stage. As Mr. Short indicated, we're not kicking the can down the road to a future owner to pay that DCC cost. So depending on how the ACCs are structured, we would probably recommend administering it in a similar method. But it all depends on how you actually calculate the fees. Are you doing it on a per lot basis? Are you doing it on a per square meter basis of the bill? So it's really dependent on how you're calculating the fees as to what stage those fees are applicable. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Counselor Turner, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, just further clarification. When speaking about single, sorry, subdivision for residential, were those for only R1 homes or were those R1 lots or were those for R2, 3, et cetera, or 2 lots as well?
Through your worship, it would be for R2 lots as well. And what we do in those circumstances is we charge DCCs at subdivision stage based on the lowest density that's permitted. And then at building permit stage, if they constructed a higher density, then additional DCCs would be applicable. So it's the same thing too. You gotta pay DCCs on a secondary suite. And at building, or sorry, at subdivision stage, we don't know what units are going to be built, the suites, we wouldn't charge it. But then at building permit stage, when we have the final idea of what's being built, we would charge any applicable DCCs that are owned. So ACCs would work in a very similar method.
Okay. Thanks, Your Worship. If I go any further down that wall, go.
Just one brief comment to all of council. This is, this is really the impact to the community, right? So if we're building a single family, a, a single-family home and a lot, and you put another unit on it, that impacts the water, sewer, roads, and that. So that is those, that's the impact that we're trying to recover. So that, that new infrastructure is paid for by the new users. And then the tax base from those homes pays for the OAM, the operation of it for the long term. So this is really, keep in mind, this is for new development and new impacts to our infrastructure.
Appreciate that clarification. Counselor Terry, follow.
Thanks, Director Black. I believe that'd be more suited towards the DCC conversation. Appreciate it now though, because from the looks of this, the ACCs are going to be very similar to the DCCs in the future. So the knowledge that you're passing on is, is.
Counselor Orlando, did you have follow-up for your questions?
Your worship, just in terms of following the presentation, I'm wondering sort of what are our next steps on this essentially?
Sure. Well, for many cost charges, your next steps would be to decide if you wish to pursue them. And then to start identifying the types of projects that you want to cover through many cost charges. And start moving through the, the process of thinking about what are the projects, what are the costs? What's the allocation and the benefit associated with that? So that would be, you know, a separate project, completely separate from development cost charges because it is actually a different process legislative thing that you need to follow. So I imagine it would be up to you, up to, to staff to recommend that you proceed with it or not. If you want to move forward, then the legislation's ready and waiting. And, and I think it's anticipated that, yeah, it's going to, a lot of communities are going to take advantage of this, but it's going to take a while to identify all the projects and what makes sense to have as an ACC. And, and of course, just like with DCCs, you'll have to think about, okay, what's the impact going to be? Does the charge end up being a per unit basis? And does this make sense for us as a community to pay for it this way? Or pay for it like we've done it before where everybody's paid for it through their taxes?
Thank you for that. Any other comments before we move on? Counselor?
Thank you, Mirzals. Are there any municipalities that have adopted an ACC bylaw yet?
Oh, no, not today, no, anyway, they have, super fast.
Thank you.
Counselor Orlando, one more time.
Yeah, speaking on that, Your Worship, following, following the previous question by Counselor Lucio, cost and timeline. So if we decide to move ahead, I mean, with DCCs, for example, which is a, a further down on the agenda, the concern is the cost and time that it takes to get these done. They're very odious and expensive processes. You know, I think the, 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 the direction the political wind is blowing across the entire country is, you know, get some things done, get it in place, do it, let's get it, let's go forward, let's finish it up. Let's not spend a lot of money on it. Let's simplify it. Let's make it happen. So that's what I'm hearing every day. And I think everyone is hearing every day from every single direction on, on these kinds of things. I have, you know, no problems with charging for what is fair, but the administration of these things. And this is not local government. This is set by provincial government. And the way this is structured, it is up to us to do the work and, and, and a lot of the delays in time that it takes us to do it is because we're following, you know, sometimes complex rules. I'm not talking about ACC because I don't have any experience in this. So I have no idea about the new legislation and value judgment on it. But like, if we are going to do it, then I don't want to be here three years later, talking about how we're getting close, you know, like, so what's, what's, what's the deal? I guess my question.
Yes, I may, Your Worship. Similar to the DCC, we need to determine what those projects are to a high level. So if it is the arena multi-sport, we're going through that RFP right now to determine some of those high-level costs. I think the timeframe is, which council will be informed of, we did receive, I think, nine proponents on that project. We're looking at sometime November, December for that project to be complete. So that would be the timeline that we would be getting a pretty high-level cost for that specific project. What are the other projects that we are interested in doing? Quite honestly, I'm not certain. I think that would take quite a bit of effort between staff, council, consulting team and moving in parallel or in sequence. The DCC is the, the one that we've got underway and my recommendation to council would be, we, we need to push this one out the door as fast as possible because we are missing much of the opportunity with development that is currently underway. And we need to capture that before building permit. So those are the things that we want to get as soon as we can. Moving on to the ACC, if council so desires, we could come up with a plan, a program, cost estimate. And that is in your direction. Bound with this obviously an issue as you all know.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Thank you.
Counselor Paul.
Yeah, just further to Counselor Orlando's comments, the, I agree that if we're going to go down this, you know, how are we going to get there and get, get finished? And if we wait until we have every T crossed and every I dotted, we'll be in the same scenario that we are today with our DCCs a decade later without any substantial review or update. If we're, if we're going into a serious scenario with the multiplex, it would seem to me that that potentially is a pretty easy bylaw since it doesn't have to go through the same kind of processes. I, I think the caveat is with this feasibility study, and question in my mind is, can, can or will the feasibility study capture those holistic numbers that are adequate for creating the bylaw? And, and then my final note is this is largely on the recreation side. You know, that list is, that's in Ms. Donato's area of responsibility. So if there's more that should be there, I think that would be in, in that, that realm. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Okay, counsel, let's move on to the DCCs. So Mr. Short, you're going to present that too?
See if this works with the same logic as it did before. Yep. Okay, so development cost charges. So I'm going to give you a bit of a background on the process, the timeline. We're, we're moving well along with this, this process. But also give you a bit of a reminder on DCCs, just because it's good to just keep some of these reminders in, in mind. And then give you an update on the growth projections, the projects and the costs that we've, we've come up with so far. So in terms of the background, I won't touch on this in too much detail, but basically you've got an older bylaw. It was, you know, updated in 2008, minor adjustment in 2021. But now you have some recent studies, transportation, water, sewer, parks, recreation, stormwater, the official community plan. So that gives us a great kind of background and foundation for updating that all cost charges. So phase one was startup background analysis and growth projections. That's done. Phase two is projected cost estimates. That's done. There may still be a little bit of, you know, some adjustments being made for some items. And then we're, we're moving on to phase three, the DCC calculation. So we're just giving you this update in between phase two and phase three. And then once we've got the calculations, we're going to consultation, engagement and then finalization. As I mentioned earlier, it takes like 12 to 18 months. We started it back in September, October. So we're kind of well along in the process, but it does take some time. Because there's, there's a lot of details that have to be gone through. And then in terms of deliverables, we've got the, the growth projections, cost estimates, DCC calculations, background report, meetings with council, engagement with community, and in the end, ministry approval is our completion. So once again, DCCs, you're pooling funds to pay for off-site capital projects which benefit all the developers. There's a local government act sets out what you can recover through DCCs. So a couple of little changes since we met last time. Yes, you've got water, sewer, storm range, transportation, parkland. But they've also added a few other items to the list, solid waste and recycling facilities, fire halls and police stations. But we are progressing forward with what we've got in terms of our information. If we want to move forward with relative speed. But that is an option for you to think about in the future is if there's some fire halls or police stations that you need to think about. And then there is also an option in the resort region, DCCs for employee housing. We did get some clarification, or actually Paul Simon got some clarification that the municipality needs to own the, the employee housing or have an interest in that employee housing. That was just kind of a question that's always been, been out there. And then who pays them? Just like with ACCs, applicants for subdivision and applicants for building permit. And, and in calculating the DCCs, we take up at the total program costs. How much is allocated to existing users? You subtract that off. The municipal assist factor, you subtract that off. The municipal assist factor, uh, you subtract that off, then gives you the DCC recoverable costs. And, uh, I want to spend a little bit more time talking about benefit allocations. So the benefit allocation is the, the benefit. Uh, that each project, uh, reflects to the, you know, existing community and the new, uh, development. Similar to ACCs that we talked about, you, when you have a project, you have to say, well, how much of this project benefits the. Existing community and how much of it benefits the new community? And there's a number of different ways that you can, uh, figure that out. Uh. With, with this roads example, uh, we're saying, okay, let's look at population, which is often used. And if at the end of twenty years, forty percent of the population is new and sixty percent is existing, let's allocate forty percent of the costs. To, uh, new development and sixty percent to existing. And I just, uh, have an example, you can see when you change the benefit allocation. Uh, suppose you have a project that's got seventy five percent, uh. To growth and twenty five percent to existing, it's a two million dollar project, you've got eight hundred development units. It, the DCC is going to be eighteen hundred and fifty six. And then if you shift your, your thinking or use different methods or have different projects that maybe have forty percent allocated to growth. You can see that the, uh, the DCC per unit goes down to nine ninety and then thirty three percent allocated to growth, it goes down to eight hundred seventeen. So there's a pretty direct relationship between how much you allocate to growth and the actual DCC for that project or that bundle of projects. And then there's the assist factor, and that is a completely different thing. That's completely within council's power. It's, uh. It's, uh, a factor to be used at council discretion. And the whole rest of the community pays it, pays the assist factor. So right now you've got a one percent assist, which is the lowest that you can have, which basically is. Giving the message that, uh, new developer is paying its, its full share of the costs. Um, however, the problem you have is that your DCCs are, uh. Are calculated with kind of older outdated costs, but if you have a one percent assist factor, it's basically saying that message. Uh, if you have a fifty percent assist, it's, it's saying. The rest of the community is helping subsidize or assist in paying for the costs associated with growth. So that's a different number than the benefit allocation. Benefit allocation is based on technical things like sewage flows, water flows, traffic and population. Assist factors of purely political dial that you can turn and say, you know what? We think the DCCs are too high here. We're going to. Dial them, you know, make them less, but that means the rest of the community is paying rather than growth is paying. So those are two totally different things. Um, so the basic DCC calculation. And it's very basic as you take the recoverable cost divided by growth gives you rates per unit. And then this is just the process that we're in estimating growth, determining capital costs, determine the benefit factors. Uh, and determining the assist factor when you calculate the rates. So we've gone through stage one, two and three and, uh. And determining the municipal assist factor usually comes into play once we've got some draft DCC numbers and you can tell from a political perspective what those numbers. Are and whether you want to consider an assist factor or not. Uh, so I don't know any questions or comments. I know most of that's just review. That's why I went through it kind of quick.
It's a great review. Thank you, Mr. Short. And, and, you know, I think, uh, key for this council is, uh. Like a many cost charges, we need to get this off the ground and, and run with it, uh. After what we experienced in two thousand eighteen, we want to make sure that we get to that point. Uh, Counselor Palmer, did you have a comment?
Yeah, some questions. It, so is, is that the completion of the DCC, uh, presentation?
Oh, no.
Okay.
We got it, sorry.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, just wanted to make sure, yeah, so on the, on the, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Basics there, that's great, thanks.
Yeah, that was just kind of a review of.
Okay, good.
DCCs and how they work.
Okay.
Uh, so, okay, so now we have growth projections, which were based partly on, uh, there was a, uh, report. Uh, prepared by Rennie Consulting and, uh, which formed the basis for the official community plan and, uh, infrastructure projects. But then there are also some, uh, recent, uh, statistics, uh, from, uh, uh, from the city on development from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty three. And so we, we looked at those projections, had discussions with, with staff. And, uh, in essence, uh, we've got a baseline, baseline projection that's about one percent growth, but then on top of that, we're layering some approved units. So right now you've got about eight hundred and sixty multifamily units approved under development permits. Uh, building permits have been issued for three hundred and seven units. This was as of the end of the year, which means there's about five hundred and fifty. That remain to be built. So we said, okay, those five hundred and fifty remaining multifamily units will be built over five years. Uh, at about a hundred and ten units per year. These are just assumptions to get us to this kind of end growth number. Um, looking back, we see that sixty pers- sixty four percent is multifamily and thirty six percent is single attached. Which is a, a really healthy number by the way, for a community who really shifted. A lot of communities have that as an aspiration to shift. To more multifamily, less single attached. We've actually done that. And then another thing we had to think about was accessory dwelling units because of the new legislation, they're, uh, being permitted in, in more places. And they have been, uh, permitted, uh, recently. So there's been a few that have, that have come up and no doubt there will be more. Uh, so I think there's been about six a year. So we said, okay, let's just for round number calculation purposes, assume, say, five, which would be about a hundred. Over twenty years. And bear in mind that these projections, we, we're just aiming to kind of get it, get it close. It's no doubt going to be different than what we've projected. So the result is over twenty years, we've got three hundred and thirty three single attached, hundred carriage homes and nine hundred and thirty multi-units. Uh, when we add in the approved units and the baseline units. So that's the residential growth projections. And then we also have. Uh, some industrial, commercial and institutional growth, growth projections. So we based that on, uh, building permit value type, square footage. Uh, there was data from the province and data from the city of Riverstoke, uh, building and bylaw services. The data from the province comes from the city of Riverstoke anyways, but it just went back a little further, uh, was a bit easier to get. Uh, so we looked at, uh, sort of trends over the last, uh, eleven years and projected those forward. And then we also kind of tested that against, uh, there were some recent reports that have been done in terms of, uh, availability of commercial and industrial land. Um, so we've got some round numbers in terms of square meters, uh, sixty eight thousand commercial, eighteen thousand industrial. And about six thousand institutional government. Institutional government is always hard to project because it's very lumpy. You know, something a little screwed or a hostel or something like that, or a clinic and anything. Uh, which is exactly what you see when you see your information. There's something that's built and nothing is built. So. And it doesn't quite frankly have much of a bearing on the DCCs, those institutional government projections. So then we've got this, this summarized total of the, you've got the units of single attached, accessory dwelling units, multi unit, commercial, industrial. Institutional government. So these are the numbers we need. So then we say, okay, here's all the things that we're projecting that'll get built over a twenty year period. And then we move on to, oh, I don't know, any questions or comments on that before we move on to the, the costs? I'll just keep going with the cost. Yeah. So costs. Uh, and, and this was a great thing. You had these recently completed master plans for the cost of the projects. There were still some things that need to be refined, uh, but because of recently completed, they provide us with great information. Uh, we're also working with, uh, McElhany on the engineering and, and kind of refining the costs. Um, and these numbers that I'm going to give you, there's still going to be some refinement that has to be done. Uh, because some projects we're still considering whether, uh, some are kind of like maybe along the edge, maybe they shouldn't be in the program, maybe they should be in the program. Uh, and also in terms of the benefit allocation, more thinking has to be done, but it's, 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 it's very close. Um, so with water, we've got a range of projects and these, uh, these are kind of grouped into, into categories. Of transmission mains, reservoirs, pump stations, treatment upgrades, uh, there's some new pipe connections, uh, there's some upsizing existing vector capacity. And, and one thing that I, I, I left in there, even though it'll, well, we could leave it in, uh, in the DCC project list, which is tab zero allocated to growth. Is that there's, there's quite a long list of pipe, uh, upsizing or, uh. Pipe changes that have to be done to address fire flow deficiencies. And we had quite a bit of discussion as to whether or not. Some of that should be allocated to growth or not. But at this point, we're saying, no, because. A philosophy for development cost charges is if it's required to address an existing deficiency, an existing problem, it's not really a growth problem. So you shouldn't be charging, uh, for that. So I just show that all this to say, okay, there's about three point million. Three point one million of upsizing to address, uh, some existing deficiencies, which is usually fire flow in certain areas. Uh, but that isn't allocated growth, but it kind of just gives you clarifies in your mind that, oh yeah, there are some projects that are on the list, but they don't get allocated to growth. Um, and then sewer, we've got lift station upgrades and replacements, collection system upgrades. Uh, water treatment facility upgrades. And here's another one that's on the list, the connection to the big Eddie area. So there's twelve point three million dollars in there. It's like, okay, is that a growth related project? Hmm. Yeah, that's probably more like a big Eddie, local service area project where the, the folks in that area, we need to kind of pay for that. As a separate item rather than as a growth item. Maybe once it's built, expansions to it could be related to growth. Uh, so in this, um. Uh, in this version, we're saying, okay, we're not going to allocate that connection to the Eddie, Eddie to grow it because it's mainly servicing an existing situation. Uh, transportation, we've got a range of projects, bridge connections, bikeway projects, uh, multi-use projects on street and off straight. Space is intersection improvements. And, uh, the general philosophy we apply with transportation was to do it based on. Uh, uh, a population percentage allocation. And so the calculations we did identified that at the end of twenty years, about twenty five percent. Of the population of the units will be new. So we can say, okay, if there's a project that benefits both growth. And, uh, the existing population fairly equally, then let's use that twenty five percent allocation. But there might be some where we think a little bit more about is like intersection improvements. Well, why do you have to improve that intersection? Is it being improved because just to serve growth or is it being improved because there's a, a problem there now? You need to fix it now and it's also serving existing residents. But that's, that's some of the thinking that we've gone through to come up with, with these numbers. And then parks, uh, we looked at the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, but we also, uh, talked to your Director of Parks. And considered a, a range of, of projects. Now you don't have a Parks DCC right now, so this would be completely new. And also. Um. And this will be where many cost charges will come into, into thinking with parks, you have a very constrained list of things that you can have through a Parks Development Cost Charge. Uh, so we identified those constrained items and, uh, identified these items and then allocated. The cost to growth based on the percentage of new population. So we got a summary, we got basically about a hundred and ten million dollars in costs total and about fifty five million allocated to growth. Now, once again, that number might change. And I, I thought, okay, for context, what's that a hundred and ten million dollars like compared to the? Uh, oh, I didn't do a slide for that, but the, uh, the, the previous DCC has about sixty million dollars at least. Check that in terms of the actual, um. The actual total cost. So, um, I guess my, my message would be that, uh, the, the costs that we're looking at are. They're going up, which is probably no surprise either. Um. Yeah, it was, uh, sixty one point six million dollars in the two thousand eight existing DCC that was updated in, uh. Twenty twenty one, so that's, you know, a seventy eight percent increase from hu- hundred and ten million from sixty one point six million to a hundred and ten million. So that's the, uh, so those are the costs. So, uh, that gives you a kind of a, a general idea of. Where we got the respective costs. Yes.
You know, my dear worship, to the chair, can you pull up the page, uh, for the sewer again? Sewer costs?
Sewer, yep.
Uh, I'm hoping to the chair that maybe Director Black could answer this question, but why are as the wastewater treatment facility upgrades? One hundred percent being to growth?
I can actually.
Uh, if you could, please.
Question, but, uh, feel free to interject if I'm going off track here, but.
The first thing that I would make to, to the mayor and council is that, um. We know currently that we have a sixty million dollar budget for a plant that the province is now pushing us towards a thirty one billion dollar plant. And in the long term, we're looking at a sixty million dollar plan. So this portion is a very small portion of that, but we're only looking at a twenty year window.
Okay.
And the growth is anticipated within that window. A good question in my mind is. Though we know this is a sixty five million dollar feature. How much more growth is going to be coming into town that would be directly attributable to that growth? Or is the remaining growth only due to the existing community and changes to the regulatory framework?
Okay, and I, I think I understand most of that. Um. And because I have an engineer friend staying with me, I had to read through the wastewater treatment facility, uh, report again today and last night. Um, it says that we're operating on a nineteen seventy three permit. Uh, that it hasn't been updated since, we'll just go with fifty years, aside from what happened to smaller grades over the last five years. Um. I understand the need to look for funding. But I'm worried that we're attributing it to growth when we shouldn't be. Uh, I just have a, just want to caution a little bit of that.
And if I may, your worship, um. Counselor must be aware that all of the work that we've done in here is been tied directly to the growth projected in the OCP. And so that is how we've. Managed to, uh, address the growth based upon something else that's just not engineers saying. We think it's going to be, uh, we've actually got our OCP. So if growth accelerates, we know what that impact is. Decelerates, we'll collect the appropriate amount of money for that twenty year life cycle of this project. As Joel indicated earlier, much of the concern that we have is that we've got a project list from. The, the two thousands. Um, we did not adopt a, a two thousand eighteen version of this and. Uh, Director Simon, how many, uh, building permits have we issued in the last four or five years?
Twelve hundred, a hundred and thirty.
So, so the consequences of, of this are all very significant and that's the last point I'd like to make. Um, we're, we're being very methodical. It is not, uh. It is very tied to other documentation and growth projections within the city. And I can assure you that whatever's projected here for, uh. The, the future growth and to bound on our infrastructure is based upon that.
Okay, I, I do appreciate that and I hope you understand that not all these questions are mine. They do come from the public and our community. So I'd like to bring them up and make sure that they're answered.
Absolutely.
Counselor Palmer, you wanted to weigh in on this point?
Yeah, yeah, because, uh. I was part of the liquid waste management plan and maybe Mr. Short can just affirm or. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. So specifically on the, the up, update to the liquid wa- uh, to the wastewater treatment facility. Is attributable or certainly was when we did the liquid waste management plan because we were within the permit, operating permit. So if we had no growth, there was no need for an upgrade. And the growth is what's triggering the upgrade to the, the plant. I think we're at risk if we don't get, and we'll come up, we'll, this come up later, if we don't get this DCC done. We're going to continually putting this burden on the taxpayer, but, uh, I just correct me if I'm wrong, I'm very specific on the. Tributable portion of the, the plant upgrade.
Yeah, that, that portion, that amount of money that we identified on, on the list there, that was, we, we had some discussions is, you know, why is this required? It's required because of growth. That's why you need to.
Exactly.
Yeah. So because it's required due to growth, we're going to allocate it to growth.
Yeah.
Now there may be some other components that say, okay, well, that's just for meeting sort of some changes, regulations or something like that. So that, that's not all of this.
I was, I was just going to add, I mean, even without the growth, that permit, although issued in nineteen seventy three would not be issued today. Environmental changes.
Yeah, we wouldn't need to.
I know, it's like when you buy a building, you have to bring, get a building permit, bring it up to today's standard, I get it. I do appreciate it, just.
Counselor Palmer?
Um, yeah, um. Uh, I'll just, uh, sort of add to that a little bit. Um, so that, that's just on the urgency of getting this DCC and I will bring that up again. On, on the big Eddie, uh, those similar questions. So we have that on zero. So I'm just sort of. Throwing that through my mind because. Without the growth. Would we consider connection to the big Eddie? You know, and again, this is, times changing even just in the last few years. So the growth that's happening in the big Eddie is. Is, is, has been fairly significant and the potential of growth is quite enormous. And so I, I wonder about that and I'm not seeking a, a, an answer or anything like that, but I'm. In my mind academically, I'm questioning whether there actually is an attributable. in my mind academically, I'm questioning whether there actually is an attributable portion to growth.
Yeah, yeah. And and I think that's that's something we did have some discussion about is to, you know, okay, what? Should we attribute some portion of that to growth? And uh, but then how is it going to be paid for? And uh, was kind of another question is like, okay, that extension. And and I don't, I I know nothing about the history or anything like that, but I could imagine that that extension would generally be thought of as being paid for by Big Eddie because Big Eddie is the area that's benefiting from it.
So yeah, and just in that, it's just something to consider a little bit more, uh, just on a side a little bit, uh, there's certainly a lot number of people in the Big Eddie that could give you an education on their portion of uh, contributed costs. Uh, make sure you got bodyguards. The uh, so uh, and and if 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 we were putting a pipe on it's the existing today, so there's a pipe size that's X.
Right.
And that would be sufficient, much like your your water flows and that was sufficient for this future. I I could get that, but I guess the, you know, the question, what I'm questioning is whether that pipe is even needed without that additional uh, growth that we anticipate in the future. I'll I'll leave it at that. It's getting maybe too much into your realm.
Right, yeah, cuz you could imagine, you could say, okay, well, if you put a pipe over the Big Eddie, that'll do for existing. Uh, what's the cost of that? And if you gotta make the pipe bigger to deal with growth, oh, maybe that should be an easy C portion of the difference. And the growth amount, perhaps.
And and if I may, Mayor Solz, so just in defense of uh, of the of the Big Eddie, there, that's one of the biggest concerns. They've joined the city, kind of forced down their throats a number of years ago. And now if we're saying to the general tax station in the Big Eddie, okay, you have to pay this. And they're saying, just a minute, what about this growth? Shouldn't they be paying? And that's that's kind of the philosophy that I'm looking at here. So I just want to make sure that is, cuz I know I'm gonna get drilled on this thing.
That's for sure.
Thanks, Worship. Uh, just with the the background on development and planning, uh, I think we're to catch point, catch point two sort of thing with the Big Eddie. Uh, the amount we could grow there without a sewer is very limited uh, for the size of lots that can be subdivided versus if there could be. And then provincial legislation being shoved in our throat for zoning updates and requirements if serviced.
And so I'm gonna actually, I'll let you make your point and then I'm I'm gonna get.
I I I think that was very valid, just what Counselor Cherry said there. His, you know, we can't grow without this thing. So now we're definitively saying this upgrade is for growth.
Counselor.
Uh, thanks, Marshall. I just have a question for Director Black. I know you had sent a letter to get clarification for bridges and responsibilities. Has that come back and has that influenced the number that's in this DCC report?
Um, to Your Worship to Council, Lucio, I have not received even acknowledgement that that letter has been received.
Awesome.
I will be following up with them and that is on my list of things to do for any day tomorrow.
Cool, yeah, there, it's just uh.
Whether I get a response, I wish.
Nope, that's fair. But uh, yeah, like that number is twenty percent of the total DCC budget. So it'd be good to know if that's valid for us to be having in there um, or not.
Absolutely. And uh, we also need to get a second crossing across the Elsola to, in addition to replacing our our aging bridges. Um, and so we'll have to tie these into that new growth scenario also.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, okay. Uh, I think I just got a couple more.
Okay, thank you.
Slides. And really, it's just about the next steps. So we we've got the 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 growth, we've got the um, the projects and yeah, there's probably still a little bit more debate, which which may come through discussions with uh, with yourselves as well, but a lot of it's technical. The assist factor is also something that we want to come to you with, but we're gonna prepare this DCC financial model. We're just on the cusp of saying, okay, let's put all these things in the model, which will calculate our rate. And I I know that's what everybody's always interested in, respected DCCs, what's the actual number? And then we'll bring that back to staff and council. And then after that, we, once uh, once staff and council feeling comfortable with uh, the the calculations and the numbers, then we can go to the engagement process. And then after the engagement process, there's a bylaw approval process where we have to uh, just ensure that we set things out in the background report and we have to refer to the to the ministry and there's readings and approval by the inspector. Uh, but the immediate next steps are, we're we're very close to having this DCC financial model repaired. Be able to come to you with some numbers, which I know that's what people want to see. So that uh, that concludes my presentation.
Counselor Cherry.
Thanks, Worship. Uh, was next in the report about DCCs for employee housing. I'm wondering if uh, this is an appropriate time, if we can get an update from uh, Mr. Simon?
Can can we do that later unless it's directly related to that?
You did mention it though.
Yeah, I saw it, but I, cuz I took questions right on the DCCs. I'm looking to the chair for
Yep.
direction.
Um, let's do that. It, does it relate to this?
It was mentioned in this report. Uh, it, that was just kind of.
So this is just to give us a guidance as to where we're gonna go as far as DCCs. So uh, can I get a quick answer?
Your Worship, Counselor Cherry, so the employee housing DCCs, we looked into it. It will be challenging to administer under our current model for development affordable housing, as Mr. Short indicated, we have to own the units, which we don't currently. And one of the other pieces I would caution council with is the province has said they're gonna be coming up with additional tools for municipalities. So I have a feeling that the DCC for employee housing might come obsolete over the next couple of years. And it hasn't had a lot of uptake.
Thanks. I appreciate that quick update.
Counselor.
Uh, thanks, Marshall. Uh, one question um, to Director Black or to President, um, if we're collecting DCCs for projects, say we have the bridge one and comes back that we don't have to pay for that, what happens to the money that is collected for that specific project?
Okay, I I can answer that question. In general, you need to be updating your DCC project list on a fairly regular basis. And it is okay to be collecting money for something and then you're kind of shifting your priorities. Usually what happens is you collect, you're collecting your money for something and uh, then you find it another way of achieving that objective. And so you use that money for achieving that objective in another way. Uh, perhaps, you know, you have a.
Grant?
Yeah, also you have to include your grants. So you update it to say, oh, now we've got some grants. Uh, oftentimes when you are updating a DCC project list, some, you will actually say, okay, this project no longer relevant, so we're gonna take it off the list. And then we're adding these other projects off the list. So that's, that kind of goes to the importance of updating it on a pretty regular basis every couple of years. Thinking about it and and at least every five years doing a thorough review of the. So you don't have to give the money back, I guess, is the, you know, suppose you collected money for something. I've I've never seen that. Pretty collected money for something and you say, okay, now we're changing to a different project, uh, cuz it's very difficult to do. But you do have to use it for, like, for example, if you have money in your transportation reserve fund for a bridge and uh, then we need to use it for transportation. You can't use it for like water or sewer. You do have to keep it in the same category.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Palmer, you have another question?
Uh, I have some comments. Um, so we saw at the beginning, okay, when this all started, so our last major uh, review is two thousand eight. Uh, a lot of years has gone by. We also saw in the presentation, the hundred and ten million versus sixty million-ish. Uh, so and so, yes, we have a one percent assist, but our real assist is forty percent right now. In every building permit that goes out, every subdivision, we're we're putting that burden on our tax base. And and uh, so this council promised in 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 general and through the election about DCCs, the previous council, six years ago, promised that they would get it done. That was unanimous right across the board of everybody. That was gonna be their number one priority for years went by. The previous council to that uh, said they were gonna get it done. And then there was a hiccup plot at the last minute that it didn't get done. So that that's, that preamble is just that I'm trying to push the urgency of of getting the DCC done. And part of that is making sure we don't throw other burdens on. We've got all this amazing work that the Director of Engineering did. Uh, some of it's now going years have gone by, but all that work was with the vision of getting the DCC done. We we need to be very careful and super focused now not to add new things. Yes, the province uh, in a nice way, kind of threw a wrench in the works, saying, okay, here's a whole bunch of uh, pieces of candy that you might wanna chew on. We gotta make sure we don't chew on that stuff. We gotta stay super focused on what we what we have on it right now. The last presentation, thank you, uh, Mr. Short. I was really thrilled when staff brought you on cuz I know you can help us be very successful on this. I did ask the question, the very pointed question, when are we gonna get this done last meeting? I can't remember what you said or exactly how you phrased, including caveats, uh.
We had a, we had a twelve to eighteen month time period.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
Good. March, six months.
Okay, good, awesome. I'm glad. The uh, so that 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 number counting months is reassuring to me. So uh, what I'm hoping that we get from this, you know, between uh, staff leading it, is uh, a a timeframe for these very, very specific things. The financial mall model that uh, uh, it's basically right there, there's a a chart or a matrix. Uh, when is that next discussion with the staff with uh, with council? Um, when is the co- community consultation? And ultimately, when do we get to those three readings and uh, recognizing that it does have to go to the ministry? There's gonna be another delay there. Um, and when when are we gonna get this actually adopted and having that timeframe? So we make sure that we get focused on getting this complete. Uh, we do know, I want to repeat what happened with the previous council. Um, and it, we are you know, a year and a half now in our four, we only have two and a half years left. And this time's gonna go by really, really quickly. And meanwhile, this burden is going on our local tax base and we're missing out on lots of projects that having the DCs would not have deterred uh, developments like across the street if it was I had been implemented previously. Thanks.
No, thank you for that. So two weeks, Mr.
Well, we are pretty darn close to doing the uh, the DCC one. But I think if we look at that sort of twelve to eighteen month period, like the, probably the earliest would be uh, that'd be, say, September, and the the latest would be uh, probably January, February next year.
Okay.
We hear your, is the urgency and and council's direction. And um, I feel comfortable uh, with how quickly we actually have moved with with this project. And I I attribute that to all of that background work that
Yeah.
we did in the last few years here with the master planning. Uh, as that really has defined what is needed now versus what is needed in that twenty-year future based upon the numbers from the OCP. So I hear Joel's concern that we're six to twelve months. I'm hopeful that it will be a little more accelerated.
Yes. Six more months rather than twelve. Yes. Yeah, and and I I hear it as well. Urgent behind it. And well, I think we've moved along at a at a pretty good pace and we continue on.
Counselor Cherry.
Feel the pressure and go fast.
Thanks, Worship. I just wanna let council know one of my fear, or two of my fears with this, and then hopefully I can get an answer on one of them from uh, anybody in the room. Uh, one of my fears, as I already stated, was uh, that if we do this wrong, it will impact future growth, especially in the housing market. Uh, another one of my fears is directly at this table. Uh, if we took up, if we look at the example page for changing benefit allocations, um, it states growth, existing taxation and all of that. I'm wondering what mechanisms are available to ensure that everybody at this council table doesn't make the wrong decision for reelection campaign. Putting some of all the burden onto future growth versus existing taxation.
And so that's gonna come down to uh, your personal uh, bias and and do you wanna do what's right for the community or do you wanna do what's gonna get elected? And so I look at that sort of thing and go, if you're sitting at this table because you wanna do what right, what's right for the community, then you owe it to do what's right for the community. But again, that's comes down to your personal um, ethics and and how you wanna move forward. And I'll just leave it at that. Uh, you know, I understand where you're coming from. But we we look at this sort of thing and go in, uh, we have costs that we need to uh, that we need to pay. And I think what Mr. Short has just presented, how the breakdowns are and the conversation that you guys have just had around the table, um, bearing in mind that you have concerns about that. I think you've got the right ethics. I think you've got it uh, there. So it's about making sure that um, we get this movement and do it in in the right way. And we'll have that conversation as we move on.
Can I just ask one rebuttal question, Worship? Uh, through the chair, are we able to change the assist factors in the future?
It's a council decision.
Oh, yeah, it is a council decision. And yes, you can actually change it in the future. That's an interesting question because uh, not many communities do. Uh, some communities have like a sliding assist factor where it kind of changes work. Uh, it's kind of built in. It is one thing that you can do. Uh, but I have seen on rare occasions where a community goes in and says, you know what? Let's change the assist factor. Let's move from one percent to ten percent or something like that. Yeah, you can do that. Uh, and I I don't think it takes very much in terms of ministry approval. Uh, I think from their perspective, it's like, okay, that's a political decision. That's something you wanna do. We're gonna sort of move that along. It isn't like a, it's a detailed review on their part. I think it could be done.
Yeah, you're right with that, Mr. Short, because we've we've experienced that before and that conversation for previous councils.
Okay.
About that sort of thing. Counselor Lucio.
Uh, thank you, Marshall. Uh, just to kind of follow up on that, the assist factor, um, is that blanket across um, all all DCCs? Or are we able to change the assist factor depending on what the project is? Like if it's affordable housing versus a First Nations housing project versus a for-profit commercial or industrial?
Hmm. Okay, so there's like a couple of parts to your question. So one is, if you've got some nonprofit housing or some housing that you want to waive or reduce the DCCs, you can do that on a on a one-by-one basis. You can consider each one as it comes up. In fact, that's generally what we recommend. It used to be, we said, just put that in the bylaw and you would define uh, affordable, especially rental housing and anything that bet that would be uh, subject to the waiver. Uh, but then that that runs into some issues. Sometimes maybe you get something that you don't really um, support or it doesn't really fit the definition and you want it to. Uh, so the better approach is to just uh, do it on a one-by-one basis. And indeed, the ministry doesn't have to approve that bylaw. So it's better to keep that as kind of like a separate item. So you can do that on a case-by-case basis. Um, and then the other part of your question is the assist factor. It, the uh, for affordable rental or uh, or not-for-profit housing, that's called a waiver or a reduction. It's not called an assist factor. It's a, it's a different thing. Interesting. I don't know why that's different. But anyways, it's it's a waiver or a reduction. The assist factor is uh, you need to apply the same assist factor for each uh, type of service. So the same, you could have, say, a ten percent assist factor for roads and a twenty percent assist factor per sewer and a one percent assist factor per parks. So each group of uh, of infrastructure, you need to apply the same assist factor, but you can have different assist factors for different types of infrastructure. Uh, yeah, so hopefully that's.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any last comments, Counselor O'Neil?
Uh, Your Worship, uh, thank you. Yeah, uh, just for council, um, I'd like to uh, reiterate uh, comments made by the counselors in that my preference is to get this done as soon as possible, as move as quick as possible. Uh, so through the chair to that point, uh, my question is, uh, twelve to eighteen months has been given as a window. What can we do to get back to twelve months uh, instead of eighteen months to look at that September uh, 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 option for completion?
I'd say the primary factor in the in that time range is the number of iterations of engagement that you need to uh, go through. So if we have uh, a really um, I I guess it's if you have a a robust early engagement process and you've heard what you want to hear and then you want to move forward, then you don't have to go back, like again, a bunch of times. That's usually what takes the extra time, as you say. Okay, we we did the development cost charges. Uh, we have a lot of concern backlash uh, issues, then we have to go and kind of each out late, readjust, come back and then maybe more concerns, go back. And then maybe more concerns, go back, recalculate, readjust, come back. So that's usually the biggest factor in the kind of the timeframe is iterations of engagement. And and sometimes it comes down to to counsel, how comfortably you feel in terms of what you've heard. And whether you want to be able to move forward with. What's completed or make further changes, maybe adjust the assist factor, for example, or think about the project list. So that's that's kind of what. I think that's the time for.
Oh, yeah, Your Worship, thank you. And to to that point for myself. You know, it's my belief that the engagement process is challenging in that it's fairly highly predictable. As to what will happen in that, like in any other thing, parties most directly affected will. Speak the loudest to it. So if they feel, for example, that they have to pay for it, they will do that. And so, you know, because they will be paying attention and be able to provide their input. You know, it's not a massive marketing exercise on our part to to hear that. I think though, as we benefit from presentations like this and previous presentations and lots of experience in understanding what. A DCC bylaw is is based on, you know, for example, the OCP is based on a comprehensive inventory of what needs to be charged for. It's based on provincial legislation. It's a it's a very technocratic exercise in getting us to where we want to go. We have heard, for example, that the municipal assist factor is varied and able to be changed in the future. So that is that is a dial you can change, but it does not affect the underlying factors of, you know, that we need to pay for sewer. We need to pay for water. And that, you know, this additional cost brought by new development, if they, if there is not sufficient. calculation of the costs, then those costs go somewhere else and that goes back to everyone else in the community. So I think, you know, from my perspective. You know, we do not need to engage in in multiple. Months long events. I don't think that will be good for council. I don't think that will be good for staff. I don't think that will be good for the community. I think it's a matter of trying to just make it clear for everyone who's interested that this is happening. And for council to have the ability to, you know. Do what is actual, do what's right, do what's fair for everyone, all parties involved. And complete this process, which which I think is something that the majority of residents would like us to see. Happen sooner than later.
All right, good for the comment. Thank you, Mr. Short. Appreciate your time. Thank you for making it here today to do your presentation. We appreciate it. Pretty concise and you're giving good guidance as we move forward. So we really appreciate that. Oh, thank you. Oh, sure, if there's a. Oh, Councilor Gallow. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just going to inform you that I have a doctor's appointment in a few minutes anyway, so I'm going to have to exit the meeting. I do agree that this is a massive priority and I'm glad to see it moving along quickly. I don't really have anything much else to say on it that other counselors haven't said, but thank you for the presentation and I'm going to exit at this point.
All right. Thank you so much. Take care.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. All right, counsel, we've been at this for two hours. You probably got two hours more to go. Do you need to take a break or you guys are okay moving forward?
I'm okay moving forward. I will need to leave.
All right. Let's move on to item D. Density bonusing program, housing agreements, cash and lieu options. So that moved from the council agenda to today to have a bit more discussion. Mr. Simon, do you want to say anything before we ask Mr. Cherry to delve into it?
Through Your Worship, I don't have a formal presentation. If council wants me to give an order, I'm happy to. But given that this is a new promotion brought forward by council, I'm also happy to sit back and not insert myself into the conversation unless you have questions about my.
All right, we're going to turn it over to Councilor Cherry. If you drive it forward, we can.
Thanks, Your Worship. This is new for me, but I'll give my best. The reason I brought this forward. Is because although we do have housing agreements through the density bonusing program. Not a single unit has come to fruition. What's happening is developers are not building these. We're not getting market rate housing. We're not getting below market rate rentals. We're not getting anything. The goal here is was for staff to come up with a cash and lieu option for the current housing agreements. That'll both. Fund, sorry, both allocate funds to our Affordable Housing Reserve Fund as well as fast track some of these units to be built. Over either this building season or next building season, seeing that benefit of both cash and housing units. That's why I wanted to bring this forward. Through the chair, though, Mr. Simon did present a report and I was hoping he would be able to give us. A quick synopsis on how he came up with these figures.
Mr. Simon, yes, in a moment, but I have a question for you, Councilor Cherry. When we talk about how we move forward and get these things built with cash and lieu, we haven't seen anything built. How will this policy promote getting things built?
Oh, that's quite simple, Worship. The developers, from what I've experienced and what I've talked to, the developers aren't building them as. They can't get their money out of them. If it costs six hundred, seven hundred grand to build a unit and they're only able to charge on average twenty, seven hundred dollars a month in rent, even though market rate is pushing that towards more four grand. They're just not finishing the projects. They're building everything around them and there's no net benefits to the community. Fearful that in the future, these projects will be left incomplete.
And so how do we motivate them to build the project? That's kind of.
That's that was the goal.
This this one, and so let me let you answer your question rather than be put words in your mouth.
Yes, and I do appreciate the prompting. Like I said, a little bit nervous here on camera. The goal here is with this is to incentivize them to give them an option to actually be able to sell the buildings at market rate. Rather than being forced for a very long housing agreement where a lot of wear and tear will happen on these homes. It also brings the burden off the staff to enforce the housing agreements. As they've mentioned a number of times, that this would be very difficult to achieve. It will take a lot of time. On top of all of that, it also gives them an option, the cash and lieu option, which will fund our Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. That can be used for a number of other purposes.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that. So, Mr. Simon, comment if you don't mind on the dollar figure that we have in front of us. And then just gives us some clarification.
Thank you, Worship. I'll keep it super high levels as much as I can, but just get a little bit technical. So feel free to ask questions of how we arrived at these figures. Staff tried to provide an objective way and give counsel a few options on what figures may be appropriate to charge to allow developers to get out of their housing agreements. As Councilor Cherry indicated, definitely some challenges that we've seen with the development community. They need to hang on to these units, which means they need to carry a mortgage on them as interest rates have gone up. It's challenging for them to want to do that over the long term, over the lifespan of the housing agreement. So they can buy out of them. We have money in our affordable housing reserve. They can then sell or rent the units at their at their leisure without being restricted by the terms of this housing agreement. And one thing I would note too, our density bonusing program is quite broken right now. The low baseline densities we have that force developers to do density bonusing. Makes it even more challenging from a financial perspective. So with the zoning bylaw update, those baseline densities will be going up. The density bonusing program will be recreated and it will be more viable for development, which means. And what everyone wants, units get constructed, some of them non-market, some of them market, much easier. We also want to note before I delve into the numbers here. Staff were planning on preparing a policy that kind of guided cash and lieu at the discretion of council for housing agreements. So you have a project come forward, council could say, yeah, you got to provide four units as non-market housing units. Council could then make a decision, say, you know what, we're going to take thirty grand a unit, forty grand a unit, whatever the rate ended up being. Instead of you actually going through this cumbersome housing agreement process for the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. That was intended to be done by the end of this year, but we were going to use money from the half program, told them to fund it. We weren't successful in half. So that's probably going to be kicked down into twenty twenty five. So the numbers that you have in your report here, you got three options. One of them is thirty seven thousand dollars. The option two is nineteen thousand seven hundred and option three is eighty one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars per unit. So if council does want to execute this option, we recommend option one. And the way we've calculated that. Excuse me. We went through all five housing agreements that have been executed via bylaw, adopted via bylaw over the last few years now. Looked at what the average rental rates were based on the most updated housing needs assessment. I looked at a survey. We don't get CMHC data on this stuff, but I looked at a survey of over five hundred respondents in the community to get average rental rates. Over one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom. So we looked at what was the difference between the rental rates that people are paying and then the rental rates in these housing agreements. And then we took that difference. So for example, the first housing agreement for Stoke Living. The difference for a three bedroom unit is four hundred dollars per month. Those units are secured for twelve years. So when we extrapolate that four hundred dollars per month over the lifespan of the housing agreement, you get to a value of about fifty seven thousand six hundred dollars per unit. So we did that for all the housing agreements, added all those numbers together, divided by the number of housing agreements to get an average per unit cost. So that's what we did for option one. Just before I delve into option two, does that make sense?
Yes.
No, no questions about that?
That's logical.
Just one trivial question or small question. So that's on today's dollars. That's not anticipating future values.
Thank you for bringing that up. We did account for CPI in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Because the numbers in the report on average rental rates were based on twenty twenty one data. So we tried to account to get up to today's dollars. But when we went forward projecting costs, we didn't add on anticipated two percent inflation year over year. So the cost could potentially be higher, or you could look at it as not the cost, the value of the housing agreement could be higher if you accounted for that, certainly.
Yeah, Councilor Chair.
Thanks, Your Worship. And these housing agreement rates are static?
Through Your Worship, they are allowed to increase rental rates based on the allowable increases under the Residential Tendency Act year over year after they get occupancy. So they're static until the point they get occupancy and after they get occupancy, they can increase them. Generally, it goes up one to three percent a year on the under the Residential Tendency Act. Or zero in recent years.
Further comment?
Yeah, just on that point. So it's probably less than that future value, but it compensates for that differential. So then using today's dollars is good.
Yeah, it's it's an imperfect science.
Yeah.
So that's option one. Option two, when we did our housing action plan, we anticipated that this was going to be something we wanted to look at, a cash and lieu option for housing agreements. So as part of that housing action plan, we had an economist who was working with us on that do kind of preliminary analysis on what cash and lieu rates might be. And the real proper way to do this is to try and understand land lift. Because the whole idea of density bonusing is as a result of giving you some extra density on your site, the land becomes more valuable. And the value of the land going up, the city should partake in in entertaining the benefits of that as a result of the density bonusing. Hence why we get something in return, some amenity in return for it. So this looked at the land lift and did a more proper economic analysis from a trained economist. To try and figure out within our downtown zones, which historically before twenty twenty two were the only zones that were eligible for density bonusing. So those are the only case studies we had. They looked at some case studies in downtown. And what they came up with was a range of about thirteen thousand five hundred to twenty five thousand nine hundred dollars per unit. So what staff have done is split it down the middle, make it nice and simple, nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars a unit. If council wanted to go with this option, council could certainly say, we think the higher end is more appropriate at twenty five thousand nine hundred. We're just kind of laying this out as an option and that preliminary financial analysis was included as a linked attachment in this report. Now, I will caution that analysis was always intended to kind of be a starting point for us. As we move forward in the future on developing a policy. And we would be completing as part of a policy, more robust analysis on the land lift effect associated with density bonusing. Now, option three is before I go on there, any any questions about option two, how we landed on that rate of about twenty thousand dollars a unit? Oh, seems pretty straightforward. An economist came up with some good numbers. We put them in the report.
Worship, to the chair, I don't have a question directly on that, but can you just, for the sake of reminding council, how many units are we talking about in all of these housing agreements combined?
Twenty one.
Twenty one total units that haven't been built.
Twenty one, yes. Perfect. Thank you. So last option, option three, it's the exact same as option one, except instead of looking at our average rental data that we received through that twenty twenty one survey. We looked at the BC housing household income limit levels of what would be affordable rental in the community. Which, yeah, you can see there's a big difference in the numbers. We landed at about eighty one thousand dollars a unit. And staff would recommend this option because it's not really equitable to hold the developers to the same numbers that these highly subsidized BC housing projects can go at. Sometimes we do when we're negotiating the housing agreements in the background before they come to council. We use the BC household income limit levels as a bit of a starting point. It works a lot better for one bedroom and even two bedroom units potentially. But once you start getting into the three or four bedroom units, their average, you know, affordable rental rate in Revelstoke is like fourteen hundred dollars a month for a three bedroom unit. And we all know if you're renting out a three or four bedroom townhome, you're looking at the three thousand dollars plus a month mostly. So even our survey we did in twenty twenty one, even when you count for CPI increases is probably quite low compared to today's values of what people are actually paying in rent. But that's how we came to eighty one thousand dollars a unit is looking at the average rental rates under BC housing data. As opposed to our more recent survey that was done in twenty twenty one, or more, I should say, more context specific survey for Revelstoke for market rental rates. So with that one, again, we took that and applied that lens to all four housing agreements. And then took the average of all the numbers to come up with a per unit basis. Now, I will note with any of these options, if council does want to execute this as a as an option to beef up the Affordable Housing Reserve. We recommend you do a flat rate for all the developers who wish to buy out of their housing agreement. Regardless if it's a one bedroom unit or a three bedroom unit. It makes the administration of this a lot easier and it makes it more consistent for the development community to be able to purchase out of their housing agreement. And even when you go through the numbers here, you can see the values, even with option one, they vary quite significantly. Stoke Living being at the highest, almost sixty thousand dollars per unit is what the value of the housing agreement is. Where when you go into the one unit we secured for a mixed use project on Second Street. You're looking at a value of about thirty five thousand dollars a unit, Victoria Road apartment building, seventeen thousand dollars a unit. Recent hemlock development for row houses, about thirty eight thousand dollars a unit. So it varies widely. And if you keep it at one flat rate, not only is it easier to administer and for the development community to understand. It makes it consistent and it accounts for the varying times that these housing agreements were before council to create. An even playing field for them to potentially buy out. One of the challenges from staff side is administering these housing agreements long term. So if we do have proliferation of housing agreements, this is part of what we're looking at is the housing solutions project feasibility. What's the city's role in non-market housing? If we want to keep going down this road of doing housing agreements through density bonusing where we're not taking cash and we actually want to oversee the units. We need to have a long term game plan of how we're going to be managing go oversight of these units. Because right now, it will be incumbent upon the planning staff to be reviewing lease agreements. We'll probably be pulling our corporate services to help us with that as well. And making sure that these developers are abiding by the terms and conditions of the housing agreement. And if they're not, then the recourse for the city is to go through legal channels, to essentially sue the developer to mandate compliance with the housing agreement covenant. So you can see there are some challenges and staff aren't opposed to an option of buying out. It makes the administration easier as we're working for a more long term, sustainable solution on how our role in non-market housing should be evolving. So no more from me. If that makes sense on the rates, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but we'll leave it with council for discussion and deliberation.
We're going to do a council point.
My apologies if this has already been stated and it's clear, but I just want to get it clear in my mind. So the twenty one units, that's twenty one units that have approvals but aren't built.
Through Your Worship, to get more specific, Stoke Living has five of the the row house units that are constructed now. I believe they have occupancy, but there's a trigger. They can get seventeen units before the housing agreement kicks in. So they can still build a few more units before they need to abide by the terms of that housing agreement. The hemlock development is moving quickly, but they don't have any units that are at occupancy yet. The Victoria Road apartment complex, a twenty four unit apartment that was approved, I believe in twenty twenty two. For a development permit, we haven't received a building permit yet. They've had some challenges trying to secure CMHC financing and the housing agreement is something that is that they've indicated to us is causing delays with the project as well. And then the mixed use project on Fifth Street, again, we had a building permit come in. I don't believe it's been fully issued. That project has also been on hold by the ALI as well.
Uh, You Worship, there is something there that was. Correct. Uh, through the chair, you stated that the five units built would be under this housing agreement. If I remember correctly, that phase is not part of the housing agreement. Those units have been sold.
Through your worship, the way that it works up in the housing group is Stoke Living is that they can only get occupancy for seventeen buildings total. It's the minute that they want occupancy for that eighteenth dwelling unit, they have to have half of the housing units, which is five, constructed under the housing agreement. So they, if if they sold those units, that's okay. They can't get occupancy of their eighteenth dwelling unit. They got a sixty five unit development. Once they come in and they apply for that eighteenth dwelling unit, if they don't have five units that are secured under the terms of the housing agreement, we will not issue them an occupancy permit.
Okay, thank you for that. What's the problem?
Um, so then my other question is uh, currently how many uh, affordable units through that density bonusing program exist today?
Through your worship, to the best of my knowledge, zero. The only project I've seen come to fruition is the mixed use project on Second Street right next to the Washeteria. And with that project, there was no units that were secured, even though they got a little bit of, it was a weird situation because of how small the lot was and how minimal the density was, the housing agreement wasn't imposed on that development.
Right.
Okay, so council.
Uh, thank you, commercials. A question to Director Simon. Um, with the change to um, density with the zoning bylaw rewrite and with this new legislation. Is there uh, the concern that these housing agreements could be challenged by the developers? Because now that would be entitled to density, uh, where before going through these um, housing agreements, it wasn't.
Through your worship to Council Lucio. Things change over time, obviously. And you know, as part of the zoning bylaw update, some of these developments that required density bonusing under the current zoning rules, should council adopt a new zoning bylaw? The new zone that they find themselves within may very well entitle them to density that they would get without a housing agreement. Because it's registered on title via covenant and is a bylaw that is adopted by council and was required at the time they got their approval. It would still be valid, but it does raise a very interesting question for the projects that haven't even submitted a building permit yet. Whether or not they could challenge the validity of those housing agreements. That's something that we would have to get legal review on for those projects that are not yet constructed. So it's a very, very good question. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments, council?
Um, yeah, uh, thank you to Council Chair, sort of raising the things up. Just a couple of observations, and I haven't dived in deep into thinking about it, but I always had a little bit of uneasiness with the requiring of development for uh, density bonusing for a few reasons. One. It discourages higher density, which actually reduces the inventory of market housing, which forces prices. And so, you know, we we might be doing, we might be doing as much harm or even maybe more harm to the housing supply in general. Maybe not subsidized housing, but the housing supply, which has trigger effects all the way down to subsidized housing. And so, you know, I noted it to, for example, the one on Douglas. I asked, I actually asked the developer, why didn't you apply for higher density? He said, well, it's too much processes, it'll affect profitability, it no longer works anymore. In that, if they had a higher density ability on that property. We would have had many, many, you know, whatever that density would have allowed, they would have maximized their profitability, which would have put more on the market, which would have reduced uh, it's more supply. So then the costs go down, pretty basic economics. And uh, so now layered on that is this complexity of administration. And so in one hand, we're saying, okay, we want this money, but then we're going to be taxing people to, you know, are we going to have to hire somebody or we're going to have to create grants for housing authority? And and so, you know, I, I think it's a very good question. And so, you know, if, you know, if there is this idea of going cash and lieu or reduced amounts, so it's not having that, those unintended consequences. Um, might have some merit. However, there's another question from, from my perspective. What can we actually do to encourage the private sector? Market housing to provide more market housing. And we've gone through some of those things, reduced some of the red tape, we've got better processes, we've got awesome people in the planning department are actually getting things done. Thank you. But is there other tools? And uh, and so there, I mean, there's all these layers. And if we just sort of jump onto the bandwagon wagon of one one aspect of the housing crisis. Then what are the impacts that we're having? So there's just some comments and I certainly appreciate that the topic's been brought up and having a better understanding of some of the challenges that our density bonusing program is creating currently. Uh, and will create in the future. And is there a way to uh, fix that? I think that's your intent, basically. Thank you.
So what we've come up with now, so, so what we've done so far with this you know, density bonusing program and whatnot, unintended consequences of not getting stopped, Bill. What's the unintended consequences of us asking for cash in? Oh. Go ahead.
Uh, the only net negative we have is we don't get a ten-year housing agreement with the developer. But so that being a rental, yeah, for, that's you still living as an example, that's ten years, that's twelve years, we're not getting. But we have money in our affordable housing reserve that can be used for affordable housing. It's easy to administer.
And so that money in that affordable housing can be turned over to our partners, our housing partners to build more units that way. And at least we know that we're getting units are going to be utilized for people who are marginal. Am I correct with that?
Yes. Um, I think that this program in its uh, beginning was with good intentions, unfortunately, it hasn't resulted in any net benefit. And we are multiple years down the road with this.
Okay, and we want to see things come to fruition and build up. Mr. Simon, I'll ask you the question, let me make your statement first.
And just through your worship, just wanted to add a little bit of context for council as well. The density bonusing program prior to twenty two was only applicable downtown. And in twenty twenty two, with baseline zoning amendments, we did expand it citywide. To any zone that permits multi-unit mixed use buildings, notwithstanding comprehensive development zones. Um, but I do want to note that when that was done, it was always intended as an interim solution until the comprehensive zoning bylaw rewrite was done. We know our baseline densities are far too low in the zoning bylaw for a density bonusing program to be viable. Hence why we're seeing the challenges in the market right now for those that have taken advantage of it. But I will note that with that change. The hemlock development wouldn't have gone forward if council didn't approve those changes in twenty twenty two. So it was a necessary step forward to see more of this type of housing get built. But now we're on the back end of it where some of the developers are further ahead than us with the zoning bylaw rewrite and the density bonusing program is causing some challenges with these housing agreements now.
So are we at that crux point now where we should be putting forward your proposal? Or are we better off to wait till that entire zoning rewrite is done?
Through your worship, my recommendation would be as part of the zoning bylaw rewrite, one of the outcomes, once the bylaw gets through council, should council be supportive of it? Community be supportive of it and ultimately gets adopted, is that we have a policy that guides the density bonusing program. There are, and it will coincide really nicely with the housing solutions report that we want to complete by the end of May. So we have direction about what the city's role is going to be in delivering non-market housing to this community. There's some really cool options out there that I think benefit the city really well. Squamish, for example, has a really cool program that they put in place recently where instead of saying, okay, you know, you get density bonusing and then fifteen percent of your units are affordable rental for the next twenty years at this rate cap. They say, just give us one or two units, we give them to the housing society and then the housing society manages them as part of their portfolio units. Way easier for the developers, they don't got to carry a mortgage. They don't need to uh, have to oversee the terms of the housing agreement and ensure compliance. The city doesn't need to oversee it. It's an operating partner that's just managing the tenants that are going in and out of the unit and in accordance with predefined terms and agreements with the city. So there's some really cool options we can do that still achieve the means that we want to, or the ends we want to see. Without having such a messy bureaucratic process that's heavily administrative intensive or resource intensive. So from my perspective, I see a lot of value in allowing developers to buy out of their housing agreements right now. It's baseline density that's far too low with the zoning bylaw update, it will be entitled density, we will be recommending for council. And it puts much needed cash into our affordable housing reserve to see more units constructed. You know, when we look at the financial implications, sorry to give a long-winded answer here, but if every, if you guys agree thirty seven thousand dollars a unit and every developer buys out of theirs, rentals three quarters of a billion dollars there. The city kicks in three hundred thousand dollars to a new project on the Oscar Street lands that makes it eligible for B C housing money. We might be looking at a thirty unit apartment in perpetuity, that's affordable housing. So I really see a lot of value to building up that affordable housing reserve, not so much as it's going to build more housing. But the city contributing financially to these projects is a really positive signal to senior levels of government to make these projects successful. And we need money to do it. That doesn't come from tax evasion.
Thank you for that clarification. Even though you call it a long-winded, it was essential, so I appreciate that.
Just to, just to build on top of that. While also having twenty one units of market rate housing coming. And they actually being built. There is no shovels in the ground. The goal here, when I ran for council, and I think anybody else ran for council, is to get shovels in the ground for housing. Um, I just also want to make a comment that the timing of this uh, coming before council and why I pushed Councilor Palmer to be on this meeting is we are approaching this year's building season. I want to see those twenty one units come to market by the end of next summer. I think this gives us an option to both fund affordable housing uh, reserve. As well as see these come to fruition.
Appreciate that. So uh, any other comments, Councilor Orlando?
Uh, yeah, worship, uh, through the chair, just a, a few questions and thank you, Mr. Simon, for preparing uh, this report. Um, in terms of payments, uh, when would, is there, would they be due if people were looking to get out of the agreements? Is there a risk that uh, that there would be any, any risk, any delay, any sort of saying, well, I don't have to pay you until I get to that unit I was planning to build, that kind of thing?
Through your worship, Councilor Orlando, we would be requiring payment in full. And once that payment is received, then we would come back to council and say, council authorize discharging of the covenant that's on title, that secures the housing agreement. Authorize discharge, there's a notation on title for the housing agreement and rescind the housing agreement by law. So none of that would happen until payment is received in full and you'd see the receipt attached as a, as an attachment to that report.
Good.
Uh, your worship, um, the report, Mr. Simon's report notices a pulse, notes a policy uh, sort of gap until um, uh, twenty twenty five, when uh, future uh, you know, zoning density, that kind of stuff can be determined. What happens in the interim? Uh, and part of that question is, I'm assuming this just applies to existing agreements. I mean theoretically, we would be continuing to do these density boning agreement, bonusing agreements until future uh, zoning would be in place. So how are we managing that theoretical interim? Uh, uh, in the meantime, in that period, yeah.
Your worship, Councilor Orlando, if I may, uh, very good question. And what you'll see actually now that we're quite far along in the zoning bylaw comprehensive rewrite, we have new draft zones completed. And actually on March twenty sixth, you're going to see an item on the agenda that is new rezoning application. And instead of the developer proposing a comprehensive development zone or proposing to go to R three or R four and have to take advantage of the density bonusing. We've said utilize one of the existing draft zones we have. And if it is successful of getting through the council process, then it will carry forward into the comprehensive zoning bylaw adoption, should council support that as well. So we're trying to deter developers from pursuing this program for development where it's not warranted. So for example, row house development. Now that said, if we have a developer that comes forward and says, I want to do a large apartment building where density bonusing makes more sense and they're getting a lot of extra entitlements. And we're getting into that medium or high density development, well, certainly we'd probably be ending up looking at a comprehensive development zone to accommodate that and get some density bonus and parameters built right within that zone. So it's very dependent on the type of development that's coming forward. But for some of this basic stuff like row houses. We are not advising applicants to rezone to R three where they have to leverage the density bonuses, then we're going to find ourselves in exactly the situation of that development too.
Uh, your worship, if I may, one, a question, one more question through the chair. So um, I'm trying to understand uh, how, if at all, this would materially impact uh, the form of development going forward in something that's already uh, you know, under construction. Is this going to, you know, if the, the density you know, bonusing requirement to provide a one-bedroom apartment, for example, that's not going to change anything material or will it? Will they say, okay, I've, I've bought out of this agreement, I'm moving to three uh, bedrooms here or changing the density or moving density up or down a lock into the density that they have already have an agreement. So I'm just trying to understand that. I don't, don't really know.
Through your worship, Councilor Orlando, all these developments would be approved under development permit. And so really minor tweaks and changes generally don't trigger an amendment, but if they wanted to do a substantial change, increase the number of units, increase the footprint of the building. Then they would be required to come back for a development permit amendment for council to consider. And they still need to abide by the density rules that are in their zone. One of the material changes that you would likely see as a result is maybe the developer was going to choose lower end finishes for the units that were subject to the housing agreement in order to cut costs. They might now choose not to do that as a result of being able to buy out of the housing agreement. That's probably the most likely thing that you would see.
Well, okay. Any other comments, Councilor Chair?
Thanks for worship. I'm curious, uh, through the chair, uh, if you, if you, Mr. Simon, have had any conversation with any of the developers. Uh, noting there any comments on the amounts that are recommended?
Through your worship, Councilor Cherry, nothing on the specific of a mail that have been recommended. We've had discussions in the past with some of them. I've heard numbers ranging from twenty thousand dollars a unit to forty thousand dollars a unit would be tolerable by the developers. That's purely anecdotal. They haven't done proper performance to try and understand, but we've been curious because we poked around about a new policy. We did inform all the developers that are subject to a housing agreement that this was a notice of motion that was proffered and that we would have a report coming on March twelfth. So they are aware of the report and we told them to keep their ear to the ground in terms of the rates and what the ultimate council direction would be on this.
Okay. Thanks for worship. Other reason I asked that, uh, and this to rest of council, although we have recommended rates, anybody at this table can uh, recommend a different rate, although staff do have to quantify it, we at this table don't. If we feel that a developer if the developers could afford or would be willing to pay a higher rate, that's something somebody at this table can recommend. Uh, and the same for a lower rate. If we think this rate of thirty seven thousand is not going to have any buy-in, we did, you know, therefore we don't get to see units getting built or we don't see uh, funds going into our affordable housing reserve, uh, that is something somebody at this table can bring forward as well.
So my question is, if we set a rate today and we don't get buy-in in the next few months on this sort of thing. Can we revisit this rate to adjust it as you move forward with your zoning rewrite?
Sir, your worship, uh, if I might, I, I wouldn't recommend trying to choose a high rate now in saying that if nobody buys in. It'll drop in the future. They incentivize developers to wait.
Good point, yeah. Sorry, my apologies for that, uh, for that question, Councilor.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting question. So in the spirit of negotiations, which we're doing in a very public, public way by discussing numbers. It is really getting to what's, what's fair. So it's not just what's tolerable, what's, what's fair on, for both parties. And um, and there might be, you know, shades of opinion on that, uh, and no, I, I don't know for myself. I'm, I'm curious with Council Chair, do you have a sense of that or is that something that?
Oh, I, I, a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, I wouldn't look at it as a what's fair model because going forward, the baseline density would negate all of these programs, since we get no units, no funding. So if it goes unfair, you know, something to consider. Um, I think closer to forty K per unit is thirty seven thousand, maybe on the high end. Um, and I do fear that with that number, we might not get the buy-in uh, we're hoping for. I think a low thirty amount, low in the low thirty thousand mark per unit, we'd have a better buy-in. But that's just anecdotally, um, you know, with a background in constructive and estimating development. Small background, I should say.
Okay, so my question to you, are you prepared to put a motion on the table to send this to council? Pick a number, how do we feel? How do we move this forward?
I'm wondering if there's any more discussion on the table first before we get to the big.
Council.
Yeah, we're certain that shades of sort of this, you know, of the closed. Yeah, we're, we're certain that shades of sort of this, you know, of a closed meeting discussion, uh, talking numbers with developers and that kind of thing. And um, so I, you know, uh, coming from the committee, the whole, uh, if there was a recommendation going to. Council, I would probably support it, knowing that we have some time to discuss it and then the real decision happens at the council. I, 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 you know, this is great. I haven't, quite frankly, I haven't. You know, digested all the information. Um, and so I, I don't have a sense, you know, between. I guess my sense is somewhere between zero and eighty thousand. The uh, and I, I don't, I don't know what that is. So, but and I don't, I wonder if there's others like me that are saying, hmm, you almost need a, an in-camera discussion here.
So why don't we propose that, that we put it forward to an in-camera discussion and then. And then we can have a robust conversation, councillor.
Oh, your worship, yeah, I just wanted to, as you're saying, as well as what councillor Palmer's saying, uh, the report does contain uh, information. Although it is technically public because it was uh, made public um, at the time, but for individual businesses and their ongoing contracts here, so. Um, I think uh, it would be better to move uh, any sort of specific rate discussion in camera. So as to avoid uh, impacting uh, third parties in our public discussion.
Councillor.
Your worship, uh, I just wanted to note that I may fight pushing this in camera unless a date, a very, a date. Soon is chosen. If this gets pushed back to a couple of months away, I, I will fight this tooth and nail. We lose a whole building season.
Councillor Palmer comment?
I'll move that this uh, discussion be uh, put on the next. Closed meeting, whether that be, can be the whole or regular council.
Okay, so regular council, um, two weeks time?
March twenty six.
March twenty six.
Second that.
Okay, councillor is seconding that. Any comments from council? Any others in favor? Proposed motions carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, council, for leaving that on the dock.
Hey, uh, Ms. Delacell, I'm going to ask for termination of this meeting. So someone want to make that motion for me, please? Councillor Palmer, councillor Lucio, all in favor? Motion's carried, this meeting is over. Ms. Delacell, you can stop live streaming at any time.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. We'll take a five minute break, uh, here's the Washington before we get back to the session.